Calling to order, the Tiverton Town Council meeting of Monday, June 26, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Mrs. Mello? Counsel LePerry?
Present.
Counsel LaBeau?
Yep.
Counsel Ryan?
Present.
Counsel Hilton?
Present.
Counsel Shabbett?
Present.
Counsel DiMederos?
Present.
And Counsel Edwards?
Present.
I think we're missing our state with just slaters.
Madam President, I received an email from Representative Edwards. The House is in session tonight and they were unable to make it. I will put them on the next agenda.
Thank you. Okay. Business brought before the council, consent agenda. CA 1A, approval of executive session meeting minutes of June 12, 2017. 1B, approval of regular council meeting minutes of May 22, 2017. 1C, approval of executive session meeting minutes of May 22, 2017. 1D, approval of executive session meeting minutes of May 8, 2017. 1E, approval of special meeting minutes of April 8, 2017. 1F, approval of special meeting open session minutes, June 21, 2017. CA 2, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. 2A, Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission. 2B, Tiverton Prevention Coalition. 2C, Conservation Commission. 2D, Cemetery Commission. 2E, Planning Board 4. 2F, Open Space and Land Preservation Commission 2. CA 3, Correspondence, Receive and File. 3A, FEMA, Region 1, Regarding Digital Flood Insurance Rate Maps for Newport County Review. 3B, Louise Durkey, Highland Road, Regarding Trash Bins or Trash Bids. 3C, Cecil Leonard, Neck Road, Regarding Trash Bid. 3D, Resolution from Middletown Council Opposing House Bill H. 5475 and Senate Bill S. 0481, Regarding Subdivision of Land. CA 4, Approval of Tax Assessor Abatements. CA 5, Treasurer Denise Charette, Expense and Revenue Reports for May. Are there any items the council wished to remove for further discussion?
Madam President?
Counsel Ryan?
1F, just for a ti-
Any others? Do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
I'd like to make the motion to accept the remainder of the agenda except for 1F.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Counsel Ryan, CA 1F?
Okay, so this is approval of special minutes, but it says 21st day of January, 2017. And on the agenda, it's June. So I know it's supposed to be June. So that was just, that's just the edit. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept 1F with amendments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Open public forum. There's no one on the sign up sheet tonight. The Public Hearings and Presentations. B1, Counsel Ryan, Casino Subcommittee Report. Counsel Ryan?
Yep. So according to the resolution that we have for the Casino Subcommittee Report, we're supposed to have a report to the Town Council once a month. But it took us a little bit of time to get the dates so that everybody could be there. So it's, we're a little bit late, but we only had three meetings. But I thought I would give you a report to the Town Council and also to the, to the audience, to let you know what we've been doing. So there were three meetings. The first meeting was May 5th, May 1st. The second was May 19th and the third was June 5th. So mostly, it was just an organizational meeting. And if you guys can't hear me back there, can you just raise your hand or something? Okay. So the, the members of the committee, the President is, President here, Madam, President Ms. Shabbett. Counsel LaBeau is on it. I am on it. I'm Christine Ryan. Representative Jay Edwards is on it. Appointed members of the public are Chris Romaline, George Walsh, and Carolyn Wyman. Town Solicitor, Tony DiSisto. The town clerk, Nancy Mello, are also present on the Subcommittee. And as of June 5th, Town Administrator Paul McGreevy was on the, on the Subcommittee. So the first, the first meeting, I was nominated and appointed as the Vice Chair. So I'm going to go through this relatively quickly because I'm trying to, you know, let you know what's going on. But at the same time, I think we might have a lot of meeting tonight. So that's why I'm trying to move it on, okay? Per the resolution that established the Subcommittee, the purpose of the Committee was to meet with legislators, government officials, Twin River representatives, the public, any other person, group, or committee involved in the process of performing due diligence. The Subcommittee will continue the diligence through the development of the casino. And the Committee was charged with developing a plan for allocation of gaming revenues, developing a host community agreement, and dealing with any other issues that would deem necessary regarding the casino. So because there was a time-sensitive issue with the host community agreement, we decide, the Subcommittee decided to start that first. The H, the, instead of keep saying host community agreement, I'm just going to say HCA, if you're okay with that. It basically serves as a contract between, between the casino and the town. And Mr. Solicitor, if you could, you know, whenever I get into the legal stuff, that just correct me, just jump in, okay? So it is a, it's a contract between the casino and the town, and it's basically there for the protection of the town. One of the biggest things for the protection is a safety plan. And it should be a safety plan approved by the Police Chief and the Fire Chief. So everybody on the Subcommittee got this huge book. And this was to look at the host community agreements in, as models. So it was like, we used host community agreements from neighboring Massachusetts, Connecticut, a couple of the drafts from Newport, and some of those were based on HCAs from New York and Pennsylvania. So, and it also has, it also has ordinances, examples of ordinances from the Lincoln Casino, and also from the Rhode Island Lottery and the Department of Business Regulation, which oversees the casino. So the first thing we were doing in the Subcommittee, in the Subcommittee meeting, was people were just bringing up lots of different ideas, lots of different issues. And it became very clear that there were, there was a lot of confusion, myself included. Because there's lots of players, and there's lots of timelines, and there's lots of meetings going on. So what I did in the report was broke it up into what I thought would be reasonable kind of things to help us focus. Because, because some of the issues, it was like, we would start talking and then the Solicitor said, "Well, no, that's really something the state does." And then somebody else would start talking and there was, "Well, that's actually the purview of the Planning Board." And so it would go on like this. So in this, in this report, I just put down four things to kind of guide us. So we can just keep saying, "No, no, no. Planning Board takes care of that. Don't, no, no, no. We can't do anything. The state takes care of that." Another issue that came up was, well, actually, the Town Council has already approved something. So I'm just going to read these quickly. It's just an example of just different things, and it helps us focus. So, for example, the state has a master contract agreement that governs the statutory provisions. But Tiverton can, also signs the agreement, okay? The limits on the slot machines and the table games are controlled by the state via licensing. The state of Rhode Island holds the license, but the Twin Rivers manages the license. So that's, those are the three things I pointed out for the state. For the Town Council, the Town Council has already approved the Roundabout Agreement with Rhode Island Department of Transportation and with Twin Rivers. The Town Council has approved the comprehensive plan ordinance update and zoning ordinance to include the casino. That's after it had been through the Planning Board. The Town Council has approved the road abandonment requested by Twin Rivers and recommended by the Planning Board. The Town Council has approved indemnification agreements, and this would include the roundabout, the building foundation, and the road abandonments. Okay?
Still good, Counsel?
Still good.
Sorry. Okay. The Planning Board, now, we don't want to step on their toes because they're the ones that are doing all of the details. The Planning Board moves Twin Rivers through the planning process. And that includes the master plan, the preliminary plan, and the final plan. So they take care of all that. As far as the water and sewer issues go, the North Tiverton Fire District takes care of the water issues, and the Tiverton Wastewater District is, is the, takes care of the sewers. They are separate entities. However, according to the Solicitor, the HCA can mandate that the separate entities have adequate provisions. So that's what the, that's what the clause will say, that it will have adequate provisions. Those provisions will not be in part in the HCA, is my understanding. But the clause will be, we have adequate provisions. And those provisions, I think also, the plans should be public, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so that's just so that the, the HCA is not this huge thing. It's a clause. And then it also protects us because we can say, "Ah, no. You signed it, Twin Rivers, Tiverton signed it." And we can go back there and we can find the reference for it. So that's to get your, your head, you know, it took a while to figure all this stuff out, how we could do this. But that's what we're doing. The licensing, the hours of operation, the victualling, and the holiday license can be addressed by ordinance. And if you, if this book is also, I think it's online, correct? That's, that's also, there's a couple of examples from the Lincoln of how they did their ordinances. And again, these are suggestions. Nothing right now is written in stone, so you have to think about that as well. And the streaming revenues, and it was just to put out there, the streaming revenues, there's three basic ones. The meal tax, which is outside the master contract and local control. The real estate and tangible property, which is under local control. And the final stream, which is the gaming revenue. Okay? I know this is a lot, but you can find this also, and you can start, you can digest this a bit. But I just want to, you know, get some kind of a guideline for you. So one way to approach the HCA was to look at whether or not the issues are pre-operational. For example, building permits, planning board decisions, or post-operational, which are licensing, hours of operation. And for example, security can, can be both pre-operational and post-operational. Because there's different, there's different times that they'll be pre-operational, that will cover one thing, post will cover something else. So, having said that, the Committee members and the Solicitor presented several ideas in, in different kinds of issues. These issues that I'm going over is what is going to be the first part of the draft, which I understand the Solicitor's Office is working on, okay? And we should be getting that at our next meeting. The first, the first thing is a communication plan. And one of the things that, that came up very quickly in the Subcommittee is that a lot of people do not know what is going on with the casino. They're getting lots of information from Facebook. And in, actually, Facebook can give a lot of incorrect information. So one of the things we thought was really important is to make sure that people know what's going on. So one of the, one of the things we started to do was, we're going to have a flyer that's going to come from the Subcommittee. It's going to be a one-page flyer. It will be distributed to the library, to local publicly areas, to local newspapers. It will be on the Town Hall. It will be on the website. And it will include facts on the casino project, on roundabout updates, job opportunities, Planning Board information, and public meetings. The newsletter is now in process, and that should also be at the next meeting. I understood that we're going to have a draft from one of the Committee members at the next meeting. So I would also suggest that if anybody here has questions, send the questions to, I think, the town clerk, and she can disperse it to the, to the casino members. That might be the easiest way to do it. And so we can address those questions in, in a future newsletter. The Twin Rivers has also put up a poster board in Town Hall. It's over there near the, near the Town Administrator. And on it is a website. And that website is Twin Rivers' website that's, that it will, is providing public, the public with updates. So you've got, you're going to have at least two sources there. You're going to have something straight from the Subcommittee, and you're going to have something from Twin Rivers. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of other questions, so, and clarifications. So that's one part. That's going to go in the HCA that we need communication process. Another thing that will go in the HCA, and again, it came out of the models that we saw from the neighboring states of the HCAs, local hiring and vendors. This is something that Twin Rivers talked about months ago, but we're putting it in the HCA again. It's, it's, think of it, it's a contract, but it's supposed, it's there to protect the town. So draft language has been submitted to the Solicitor for inclusion in the HCA. The suggestions include local hiring preferences for casino construction jobs and for permanent jobs. Draft language also provides Tiverton, Twin Rivers to purchase goods and services from local vendors. Finally, an HCA might, will include a provision giving preference to Tiverton businesses for promotional points program. Again, that's draft language, so I'm going to keep repeating that. Building permits and inspections, that's another category. Because this project is so huge, the inspection and professional services that are, that can be given by the town, we just don't have enough of it. So we are, we are getting some professional services and inspections that, and the cost will not be incurred by the town. It will go, it will be paid by Twin Rivers. I think that it's still controlled by the town, though.
Okay, still controlled.
The building and the inspection. So, okay, so they will, but, but the, the money will be coming from Twin Rivers. Impact fees. So this one was interesting. Because most of the Subcommittee, most of the HCAs that we looked at in the, in the neighboring states had impact fees. Sometimes they're called capital improvement fees, sometimes they're called mitigation fees. However, the Solicitor advised that the existing town zoning ordinance and the needs assessment, that study that was done for Tiverton, does not allow for an assessment of an impact fee against the Twin River Casino. So that is not an option that we can be included in the HCA. So I just want to make that clear because I think everybody was thinking, "Let's do it," and, including me. And then it was found out that we couldn't do it. Okay. Then another thing that came, another one that's, it's further down on the list, but it was right up there when we were talking, was the security. There was a security at Twin Rivers Lincoln and Newport Grand. They reported that there was zero tolerance for any kind of disturbances. But we still need specific safety plans from the police for construction details that are in progress and what will, what is going to happen in the future. We still need safety plans from the Fire Chief. They're, they're well aware of that. To best of my knowledge, they are working on it. But they, I think they have been invited in a future meeting, if they haven't. They're, I think they have been.
That's correct. They'll be at the next one.
They'll be at the next one, and, but the next one, the, the next one is not July 3rd. Just to make, we thought it was going to be July 3rd, but we couldn't do it. So we're going for another date, okay? So the plan application. Again, there's a quick reference to the state. The state law notes that the development plan approval has three stages. The master plan, the preliminary plan, and the final plan approval. Twin Rivers' master plan has been approved. And to my knowledge, the Twin River currently is in the preliminary stage with the Planning Board. That, they will deal with technical aspects such as water, sewer, drainage, landscaping. They're also going to look at stormwater maintenance, lighting, roundabout, sewer extension line, and noise. And all of these submissions, if you did not know, they are public records and they are available for review. And if they're not on the Town Clerk base now, I think they, I think they all are up to date, right? Pretty much? Pretty much. So if you, they're not there, they're in process. And other issues that have been brought to the attention of the Subcommittee for possible inclusion in the HCR are litter control, collection and disposable, disposal in the surrounding areas, smoking in the casino, which we have been told that the casino has an exemption per state law. Okay, so we can't do much about that. Responsible gambling clause, that was in almost every HCA that we looked at, and it'll go in this HCA as, as far as I know, also. If it's not under consideration by the Planning Board, if it's not already included in the state agreement, or if it hasn't, is not, it doesn't have potential to become a town ordinance, it, it may be part of the HCA. And again, hopefully, the next meeting, the draft will be available of the HCA, the draft plan, and also of the flyer. And the flyer is going to be approved by the Subcommittee before it goes out. So we can catch errors and make sure people understand. We're trying to get it to one page, so. Should I take this personally?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'm almost, I'm almost done here. In order to clarify issues, answer questions, expedite the, the HCA, the Subcommittee invited several guests to attend our meetings. Mr. Kendricks of the Tiverton Wastewater District came, Mr. Rousseau came from Twin Rivers, and he will probably be attending just about every meeting. We asked him if he could do that for the Subcommittee, clarify things, answer questions. And both of them reported on the preliminary review of the pump station located at Hurst Lane, the mechanism for residents to opt in and opt out of connecting to the sewer, the responsibilities for maintaining the sewer line, and the roundabout sequencing for construction. Mr. Leroux of the North Tiverton Fire District could not attend, but reported that he has been working directly with ARMC, AMRC, Foster Wheeler, on the casino design and the water demands issues. He felt that there was adequate water supply to meet their water demands without impacting the surrounding community. Representative Edwards reported that the Rhode Island Department of Transportation has informed him that they will be advertising for work to be done for the new stoplight at the intersection of Fish Road and Bogomash Road this coming November. And the police and the Fire Chief have been invited to attend future meetings so we can get an update on the status of the safety plans that they're involved with. And the one last thing I had, the Tiverton, Tiverton and the state and Twin Rivers had to sign this Fifth Amendment to the Master Video Lottery Terminal Contract. And at the, at the end of it, we asked for clarification. Because there was a sentence saying, "If video lottery games and table games are not both offered at the Tiverton facility, the $3 million annual guarantee to the town of Tiverton shall no longer apply." So that could be pretty important for the town of Tiverton. So we asked them, what actually does that mean? And how likely is that going to happen? And I, my understanding is they're going to get back to us with definitions and clarification. And I think that's the only thing that we need from them right now. So we've gotten some work done, not as much as we wanted to. We had a late start, but we're moving. And like I said, we should have some of this stuff in the next, at the next meeting. And I'm sorry I had to go so fast, but I, I just thought.
Could you repeat that?
No, I couldn't.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Any questions from the Council? Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
C, Town Council's sitting as Board of Licensing. Advertised licenses subject to meeting all legal requirements. C1, Alyssa Wood, Approval of Special Event Outdoor Entertainment License for Event Arts and Artisan Festival to take place on Saturday, July 15, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. 1A, Public Hearing for Approval of Sound Variants for the Special Event Arts and Artisans Festival. Is Alyssa Wood here? There. Either way. Wherever you're most comfortable. Hi.
Hi.
Could you just explain the event a little bit to let the public know?
Sure. It's an arts festival. We invite local and regional vendors to come and sell arts that they, they make, one-of-a-kind original works. Typically, in the past, I know they have done music there. It's Set Back in the Woods, and it's one or two musicians, very like a low-key ambiance type of music event. It's more about the artist rather than the music. That's just there for an additional, you know, feeling for the whole festival.
And where is this event going to take place?
It's in Four Corners. It's in the, in the lawn behind the Mill Pond Shops, Set Back.
Behind the Mill Pond Shops?
Yep.
Let's see, we have approval from the chief. We have approval from the owner of the property to hold the event. I'd like to open the public hearing for the sound variance for this special event. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Chief?
Just briefly, we have spoken, and we are going to have a police officer there for pedestrian traffic. We should be all set.
Okay, so there is a detail?
Yes, it's been arranged already.
Very good. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this topic? Anyone else from the public? Last call. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? I am now closing the public hearing. Any questions from the Council?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Special Event Outdoor Entertainment License for the Arts and Artisan Festival for Saturday, July 15, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Mr. Edwards?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sound variance for the Special Event Arts and Artisan Festival.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Good luck at your event.
Thank you.
C2, Jane Bido, Evelyn's Restaurant, 2335 Main Road. Approval of Outdoor Special Event Entertainment License, Singing Out Against Hunger, on Friday, July 14, Friday, August 11, and Friday, September 8, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Rain dates include Saturday, Saturday, July 15, August 12, and September 9. This also is a public hearing for the approval of the sound variance. Hi, good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. This is for Singing Out Against Hunger that's held at Evelyn's Drive-In that you all might be aware of. Three Fridays through the summer. The event, this is our 15th year. We've raised over $150,000 that stays in the community and fills up the Tiverton food pantry every year. So we're looking forward to having another event this year.
There's no change in the location of the entertainment?
No change.
Faces out towards the water?
Yes, the setup will be the same. The same setup as last year was three Fridays. That worked well. The times are the same. Yes.
Very good. I'd like to open the public hearing on the sound variance for this event. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this topic? Last call. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this topic? Public hearing is now closed on the sound variance. Any questions from the Council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Outdoor Special Event Entertainment License for Singing Out Against Hunger, Jane Bido in Evelyn's Restaurant, on July 14, August 11, and September 8, and rain dates is listed.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of a sound variance for Jane Biddo, Evelyn's Restaurant, for Singing Out Against Hunger, on July 14th, August 11th, and September 8th, with rain dates as listed.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
C3, Lisa Machado, Coastal Roasters, 1791 Main Road, approval of outdoor special event entertainment license, Singing Out Against Hunger, on Saturday, August 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. 3A, public hearing for approval of the sound variance. Hi, Ms. Machado?
Hi.
Again, is this the same setup as last year?
It is, same as last year.
Same location. I'd like to open the public hearing on the sound variance. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this topic? Chief?
We don't know if it's applicable for the sound barriers, but the only thing that's changed is the fact that we do have construction down there now, so I think the council has to address some type of issue. And I don't know how long, how long the parking is going to be open or closed at the beach. This may affect availability of parking. As you know, we've been, Club the Parking Lot is closed at the beach, so we have been issuing parking tickets in the area. The council has some suggestions how we can, that and the, I guess the bonfire that's coming, could address all these issues, but that's, that's the first thing that's come to mind, is the parking. Not against it, I'm for it, but I'm just saying there is a problem that we should address at some point.
Yeah, obviously, there is limited parking at the.
We have time for, to give it a thought, but.
Is it on Saturday?
Saturday.
So, there is, there would be parking where the doctor's offices are, because they're not open on Saturday, so that would, you would have some parking available there.
That is posted.
Yep.
It is posted prohibiting parking.
In the, in the.
By the owner of the property.
Okay.
Could we ask him for just that, for Singing Out Against Hunger? Or could you ask him?
I start, we could.
We could ask.
Yep.
Sure.
Will a place detail help?
If there's a limited, limited number of spots, how we're going to fit them in, regardless of the detail, I think that's kind of a waste of money. But of course, it's a good cause, we don't want to be tagging people either.
It also has cost.
If there's something, but it is a state road, keep in mind, it is a state road, and I couldn't, I can't negate the signs, but in the neighborhood, possibly, the council could have some type of a, give it some consideration, but there are, there's an ordinance pertaining to that.
Right, there's ordinances for the side streets around that location.
Correct, the Stonebridge area.
For resident parking only.
Just, we have time to give it some thought, so that's why. Yeah, Bank Newport also is closed on Saturday afternoons, we could ask them to.
Okay, so.
I know the Bank Newport has been amenable in the past, but I could talk to them as well.
Yeah, the Bank of Newport is a big parking area for that.
Okay. Just a thought. Other than that, you have no problems, chief? Other than that, you have no other problems?
Nope, none at all, none whatsoever.
Chief. So, it sounds like you have it to do.
Sounds like it.
At times.
Not the chief. Anyone else wishing to speak on this sound variance? Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this sound variance?
Suggestion, can you just put a sign to people who go up to Ford Barton to the school, too, that's another area close enough.
That's a good idea, Renee.
Yeah. Good idea.
That would work.
I don't think we have a problem with that, with any legal liability.
Sally's shaking her head.
Sally, yeah.
Are you shaking your head yes or no?
She's shaking yes.
Very good. Excellent, I think we have a solution. Thank you, Renee.
Need a bus, not a shuttle.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this topic from the public? Last call. Anyone else wishing to speak on the sound variance? I am now closing the public hearing on the sound variance. Do I have a motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the outdoor special event entertainment license for Singing Out Against Hunger, Saturday, August 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., for Lisa Machado, Coastal Roasters.
Second. Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Mr. Edwards?
Also like to make a motion to approve the sound variance for the same event, same date, same time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Very good, good luck. Non-advertised licenses subject to meeting all legal requirements. 4, C4, Lauren Camara, Psychology Studio, Inc., 1701 Stafford Road, request approval of vitriolic license for outdoor seating.
Madam President, this is put on the agenda because of the outdoor seating, because they do not need a license for the inside, but they will not be, they don't have tables or serving inside, right? You're just going to make the shake. So, it's really because they want to use outdoor seating on this. You don't have to license them in the Board of Health.
Okay, so could you just explain the setup? This is at Whistville Corners, and you're at the?
Yeah, Stafford and Bogamash.
Right.
1701 Stafford Road. So, there were, it was previously a bank or a credit union, so we're going to utilize the drive-through as a walk-up shake shop. And as far as the outdoor seating, just a few, we have two bistro, like, tables with two chairs each, so four, we might add another, so it might be, you know, four to six, just so we give some, you know, our clients after they take a, a class, they can go order a shake and sit there and for a minute, as, you know, not a place where you can go and order and wait, you know what I mean? So, it's basically just to sit and chat for a few minutes.
Drink their shake and?
Drink their shake and recatch their breath and, you know, enjoy the scenery.
Very good. Any questions from the council? Any legal issues on this? Is there any problem with using the drive-up as a walk-up window?
Just using a walk-up window? Uh, no.
Okay.
Using drive-up window, they're just changing the vertical walk-up.
Very good. And we have, the zoning official has also, says it's in compliance.
So, Nancy just made a point that I should clarify, if you're using it as a walk-up, you can't use it as a drive-up, it has to be one of the elements.
So, it's a walk-up window?
Yeah, if we ever want it in the future, then how, what would the process be?
You'd have to come back to the council.
Okay.
And then license application to change it to the drive-up.
Okay.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear on that, so that there's no confusion.
Right.
And, so, say, two, three, four tables, bistro tables, under the overhang?
Correct.
Out of, out of the sun. Very good. Sounds like a great idea. Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the viddling license with outdoor seating for Lauren Camara, Psychology, Psychology, right? All right, Psychology Studios, 1701 Stafford Road.
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion. Ms. Hilton?
I, I just want to clarify on your map, you are on public sewer there, yes, not on the septic system, it says town sewer.
Yes, with the, with the building, yes.
Okay. Just checking, because it is in the watershed area. Okay, that was all, this was fine.
Very good. Any other question? Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Very good, good luck.
Thank you.
D, appointments and resignations. We have one appointment tonight, D1, zoning board review, second alternate, one-year term, expiring 7/15/2018. Jennifer Elizabeth Hilton, 128 Church Pond Drive.
Hi.
Hi. Can you explain a little bit about yourself for a public, viewing public, and why you'd like the position?
Absolutely. I've lived in town my entire life. My name is Jennifer Hilton. My family has grown up here, and I intend to stay for the rest of my life. I'm building a home up on April Lane in the next year or so. I'm also a Realtor, and I do most of my business in town. I have a strong desire to keep this town the way it's supposed to be, very rural and beautiful. So, I would love to be part of the zoning board, so I can have an interest in that and make sure things are going in the right track for the town, the best interest of the town and the people in it. I'm on multiple zone, I'm on multiple boards, being a Realtor. I'm on the Newport County Board of Realtors as a director and a member-at-large. I'm also on the board at my company, being top 20% in my company. So, I'm very active and involved in keeping up with the Joneses and making sure everything's on the right track for the benefit of the society. So, that's where I am.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, have you attended any zoning meetings?
Yep. I was at the last one, and I have been to multiple prior, too.
Any other questions, Ms. Hilton?
I have a question, Jen, and just to clarify, we are not related.
Of course.
The zoning board has a pretty big responsibility, and to be effective on the zoning board, in my opinion, you have to be well-versed in both the zoning regulations and the community comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
And it's not as though there's an exam, but, you know, I'd like to know if you're willing to commit to put the time into learning the zoning regulations really well, as well as reading all the way through the community comprehensive plan, so you would be a well-prepared participant on the board.
Absolutely, I've actually read through both, on the comprehensive plan, I definitely need a little bit more review on, I got a little glazed over when we were going through the history of the town, but I'll definitely make an effort to memorize it, or at least have a better, well-versed knowledge of it. So, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Or, or wait, we don't.
Do we?
Right, and, and actually, it would be a good thing to waive the policy in this case, because we need a second alternate.
He'd win right away. Here I am. All right, do I have a motion to?
Motion to waive the usual procedure.
Second. Motion to waive the normal appointment procedure, has been made and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to apply Jennifer Hilton as a second alternate to the zoning board of review for a one-year term, expiring July 15, 2018.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Unfinished Business, E1, Town Administration, Town Administrator, distribution of car fleet inventory listing?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is both, I suppose, unfinished business and a little bit of new business. You, the counselor, the council had asked last time for an inventory of our cars, the regular vehicles, not the fire trucks and the, and the dump trucks and such. We actually have that for insurance purposes, but I thought it would be better if we actually had a, a chart or a, a plan that showed what we, what vehicles we might need in the future based on cars, you know, damaged or getting old or whatever. So, I asked the departments that have cars, which would include, obviously, the fire department, the police, DPW, and there's a couple odd cars with the assessor and the senior center, to, and building official, to map out what their car status was now and what it will be. And later in the session tonight, there's a couple requests to go to bid that reflect, are reflected on here, namely, in the police and fire departments. And we will be coming back to you in the sessions to come for a building official, new car, and potentially, well, I think that, I think those are the three that are really germane right now. So, just as a further point, this was sort of a stopgap, in my opinion, what I really want to create and have asked departments for in a lot of things, is a five-year plan of capital assets and such. So, this, I just needed something to understand what was going to happen here in a couple weeks when we go to the new fiscal year. So, keep this handy, because it'll, it'll come up again.
Very good. Any questions from the council? E2, Councilor Perry, vote to reconsider the June 12th vote to award the bid for weekly manual trash collection and bi-weekly automated recycling to Waste Management. 2A, reexamine the bids received and possible reconsideration of vote for award. Councilor Perry?
Yes, Madam President, I brought that up because a couple days after the vote for the contract for trash, I was surprised about the interest rate, and I just wanted to bring it out in a public hearing, so that down the road, when we had to pay this interest rate, somebody wouldn't say, "Well, that was a contractual agreement," and then we would look like fools, because we didn't notice that. And that's why I just wanted to bring it up tonight, to rehash it, and any questions that anybody has, we can discuss it.
Very good.
So, that's why I made the motion.
We don't have to have a motion to discuss it?
Well, if you make a motion, are you, are you, did you make the motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion to bring it, bring it up to rediscuss.
Right, so a second for discussion, and then you can discuss, and then have a vote on whether you'd like to reconsider.
Does he have to make a motion to reconsider now to discuss it?
So, it would be, well, you can, you make the motion to reconsider, you can make the second on the motion to reconsider, then you can discuss the merits of the motion to reconsider, which would overlap to a large extent the merits of whether to vote on the original motion. So, it would be a motion, which was made, and then a second, and then discussion.
Okay, the motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been?
The motion is to reconsider, the motion is to reconsider the prior vote.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Okay, for, for discussion, this is for discussion.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's a motion to reconsider, a second discussion, and then a vote on the motion to reconsider. Once a vote is taken on the motion to reconsider, then if it fails, then the original motion stands and nothing further. If it passes, then you take up the original question as if it was never voted on.
Correct.
So, at this point, it would just be discussion, if any, on, on a motion to reconsider, and then a vote, a vote on whether you want to reconsider the original vote.
We voted to?
Discuss.
Discuss.
Right, discuss.
This is just to discuss?
Right.
Whether you're going to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not yet been voted on to reconsider?
Right.
No, we just, we just did that.
So, so, wait a minute.
Okay.
So, what is the motion? The, he's saying the motion is to reconsider.
And that was my second.
Okay.
Now, discussion concerning the reconsider.
Yeah. So, then discussion on, vote on whether to reconsider the original motion, second, he had a second, any discussion on whether to reconsider the original question, and then after the discussion on whether to reconsider, you can vote on whether you want to reconsider or not.
Which we just really did.
But it seemed like there was some, possibly some confusion, so if we want to go back.
So, this vote was just to reconsider discussion?
No, I have a vote, I have a motion that says.
To reconsider the vote on Ju, June 12th.
June 12th vote.
Right.
Right.
Is that right?
Yes.
Can you speak to me?
Right.
And you have seconded.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to, the motion is to reconsider the June 12th vote.
Right.
Madam President.
All those, let's just repeat.
Before, I was going to say, before we vote, I believe what the solicitor is saying is that we have a motion, and then a second, and now the discussion happens, and then, and then we would vote after the discussion on this motion, whether or not we are going to reconsider. So, this would be the time where Counselor Perry.
I think he made the motion to reconsider.
Right.
Already.
Right. So, once the motion is made to reconsider and it passes, then we have the discussion where people can present whatever they want to.
Right.
Is that correct? Right now is the discussion, right now we have to vote on whether to reconsider and even talk about it.
Well, right now you're deciding. So, at the previous motion, at the previous meeting you voted on, on, on the contract that passed.
So, somebody from?
The prevailing side asked to reconsider.
Has asked to reconsider.
If you can discuss the motion to reconsider once it's been seconded.
Right, but not the whole thing, just the vote to reconsider.
Right, but it's, it's going to be a lot of overlap, so you. Right, but it's going to be a lot of overlap, so you could discuss it at this point, you could discuss it at this point.
I don't think a discussion can be held unless the council says they want the discussion. That's what I've always understood from doing this. Because it really shouldn't be discussed unless far has said yes.
Could you speak up, please? We're getting mixed messages, and it's important to try to find out what you are deciding.
Would I, would I?
Okay.
This subject should not be talked about, because a decision was already made. Somebody from the prevailing side wants to discuss this again.
Right.
He made a motion to reconsider. I seconded, we vote on that. If we decide we want to discuss it again, the vote goes through, and we discuss it again. That's how I've done it in the past, but I don't know.
If that's, if that was a fast practice of the capital, under Robert's rules, once the motion to reconsider is made and been seconded, you can discuss the whole topic, on the merits of the original motion, the merits of the motion to reconsider, and then you take a vote on whether you want to reconsider the original motion or not.
Okay, so, at this point, we will cancel the vote, and we have a motion to reconsider, we have a second.
Yes.
We can now discuss.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
So, my concern was the interest rate that they were charging us for the contract.
Mm-hmm.
That was my concern. That wasn't brought up when we first voted on this, it was, found out two days later, and I just feel that the public should know that. I, I think that was something that, you know, we should have known upfront, and I'd just like to discuss that tonight before we continue.
Very good.
Yes.
Ms. McReevey?
May I, Madam President? Yes. So, you are correct in that at no time during any of the presentations was fifteen percent or any other percentage offered as, in the discussion. What was discussed, and I, please, I don't think I'm throwing this out there to be defensive, but I just want to explain what was discussed. What Director Anderson, when he was presenting it, showed you was that there would be a repayment plan, or a, yeah, repayment plan on the deferred amount that Waste Management, in this case, was going to give us, because we didn't have the budget this year. That included in it, that was, that was $217,000, it was deferred, but we were going to pay back an extra $36,000. So, at no time, I agree with you, was that said, that represents fifteen, sixteen percent, but the amount was in the public documents. So, from a presentation point of view, it wasn't well-done to you, so accept that as a criticism. However, updating you, and I know I sent a email to the council members, we went back to Waste Management and got two clarifications. If at any time we repay the amount in full, for instance, a year, a year from now, so they're not charging us anything, we're not making any repayments for a year from July 1st, 17, to July 1st, 18, if we pay it off in full, in part, we don't pay interest on any of that. And we also asked, could they lower the repayment amount, and they've agreed to that, so that it is effectively five percent. So it's not sixteen, fifteen point nine percent anymore, it's five percent, or about $12,000, if I have that number correct. So that's, that's the current state right now. So, this, this ability to defer $217,000, because we don't have it in our budget this year, will cost us an extra $12,000 over the period of the three-year contract. The, and the third thing is, the provision that if we extend the contract towards the end of the three-year contract, they will wipe out the $12,000 as well, so we will pay no interest, or very little, I think it's less than, than half a percent. So that's, that's where we are right now.
Is that changing the terms of the contract, Peter?
Changing.
Changing the terms of the original contract?
Right, yes. Yep.
So does that need to go out for a rebid?
The, if the council, because it was dependent on the additional information that the amount budget?
Could you speak into the?
I apologize.
You might want to get closer to it.
The council does have discretion to accept this bid, so it doesn't automatically make the bid non-responsive, even though the way they've structured their payment is separate, because of the fact that they have to account for the budget allocation this year that wasn't entirely sufficient to cover the contract. So, it's, it's within the purview of the council to reject it for that reason, reject all bids and rebid, but it's also within the discretion of the council to choose what they believe to be the most responsive bid. Now, the fact that it does change the terms of the contract, I would say you're not bound to a contract until you've seen all the terms, can look at it and say, "We agree with this, and we're going to go forward with it." So, I'd say at this point, it, you're definitely not bound to a term that you've never seen before.
Very good.
May I ask a clarification, question of the solicitor?
Yes.
So, I, the, none of the, none of the original bids, in fact, this repayment thing wasn't really envisioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director, this repayment problem wasn't really envisioned when the RFP went out. Everyone responded to the RFP with a series of bids, of which Waste Management had the lowest bid for the automated recycling. It was after the fact, after all the bids were in, and it was determined that Waste Management has the lowest bid for this, this service, that we went back to all the bidders that were responsive, or at least in the, had low bids for either no recycling or recycling, and wanted to work with them, wanted, asked them if they would work with us on some sort of repayment plan. Does that change the nature? That's, that's, I think, the real point that we're trying to get around. Does that change the, the contract or the RFP and response process?
So, essentially, you do have, when you get in bids, when you go out for an RFP and you get bids in, you do have the discretion to go back, and if an unforeseen circumstance comes up, you can work with the bidders that responded to try to address issues. So it's not, you're not required to go out to rebid every time a, a new issue comes up. But if a new issue comes up, and the, and you think, and you, as a council aside, there's no way we can work with this, what we've received can't be worked with this new information that we've gotten, and then you could determine that none of these bids work, we need to go out again. But if you have bidders, you can take a look at the contract and say, "Well, we have this unforeseen piece of information, we can work with one or two, or a number of the bidders," and you do have discretion to do that, too. They're not bids that need to be rejected as non-responsive, because it wasn't something that could be responded to at that time.
So, based on that, I would agree, that's the state we're in, is that the bids, there's nothing wrong with the bids, but if, because of the, the requirement to defer payments and interest that will be charged, it certainly is a reason that we may want to go out to bid again, but not necessary. So I can agree with that.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
I'd like to ask Peter a question.
Microphone.
Microphone. Because essentially, we're, potentially, I mean, we're, we're taking a loan, because we're paying interest from this vendor, can, can the council do that?
So, we wouldn't want to structure it as a loan, because a loan would have certain ramifications. Essentially, if you were to take a loan from a vendor, one, that would be a contract that wasn't bid for, but if you were to do that, then if for some reason the contract didn't work out, you could terminate the contract underneath its own clause, the clause of the contract, then under what Waste Management, or my interpretation of what they proposed is, it's a fee structuring payment, so if the contract didn't work out, you could terminate it, you're not in debt. It's not a debt that can later be collected on for the full amount with interest. It's a payment under the contract, so that if the contract is terminated, and for any reason, and Waste Management doesn't go through the full three-year term, if either it's terminated for cause, or any other reason under the contract, then there is no debt outstanding for that amount, because the agreement is, isn't, we're affronting you this money, you need to pay us back, no matter what, with interest. What it is, is here's the schedule with which we want payment, we're taking into account the fact that you can't pay that much this first year.
And to the best of my knowledge, Waste Management has never used the term with us loan. That might have been a shorthand that either I used, or Director Anderson used, just for purposes of discussion, but I don't think that's your actual question, but just a clarification.
It's not, but, but it, it, it does, I, I am a little concerned that we are essentially borrowing money from a vendor here.
Yep.
And, and whether or not, whether or not the council can do that, and whether or not within the, whether or not the auditors would go along with that. I see Denise in the back, and I don't know if she has an opinion on, from an auditing point of view.
Madam President, before the treasurer gets up here, I'd just like to point out that regardless of the vendor that was selected, both Waste Management and MTG had a fee schedule that deferred payment, so, I mean, if, if this is something we can't do, then we cannot work with either vendor.
Although, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was MTG did not have, they had a deferred payment, but no interest.
That is correct.
Correct, so, so there was?
Just to add to that, they had a deferred payment for their low bid, which was for the non-recyclable trash.
For the, for the traditional pickup like we have today.
They did not offer, nor did we ask for a deferment schedule on their, their high bid for the recycling.
Correct.
So we have no idea what they would have, would have done, and that's significantly more money.
Ms. Sharet?
I'm not necessarily sure that this would be considered borrowing. I think it is more along the lines of like, a fee that we would be paying. My biggest concern, and if I can voice that while I'm standing here, is based on just the change in the expenses on the budget from 18 to 19, if you consider the principal on the bond, we're looking at $922,000 in increase, and that is a little bit scary for just those two items. So that's an automatic increase in our budget.
Are you talking about the school bond?
Yes, because in 18, we deferred the principal, which is, that's a typical thing to do, that was, that's no problem. So we're going to be adding the principal in 19, plus we'll be adding the payments on the deferred portion of the trash contract in 19, and when you add the two together, it's around $920,000.
But the, the school, the schools were voted on by the townspeople, they know they have to pay that.
Right, I'm, I'm just reminding you.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure you kept that in mind.
I think all she's saying, Randy, is already we have a $900,000 increase without even planning the budget, without even going through what else we need.
Is that in addition to the $500,000 that was added this fiscal year?
Yes, because next fiscal year will be, that's the interest, and then we're adding the principal. So the total bond payment's over $1 million.
Okay, so, it's 500K, 515K that we had in interest this year?
In 18.
In 18.
In 18. So when we go from 18 to 19, I'm looking forward a, a year. When you start planning this next budget in the fall, you're going to be adding $620,000 around there, I don't know the exact amount, plus any increase in the deferred trash payments. So I just wanted to make sure you?
Okay.
I have a question for the treasurer.
Mr. Edwards?
Is any percentage of that school bond payment going to be, is there going to be any percentage of that picked up by the state?
Yes.
How much?
Thirty, close to 35%, so the whole payment, so we're expecting?
So it's not really a $900,000 increase, then?
No.
It's less?
Well, it is, it's a $900,000 increase in our expense budget. Yes.
Of which we're going to get a 35% rebate from the state?
Right, but that goes on the revenue side.
Okay.
So, we're just strictly looking at the expense budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
I, I don't have a question, but, for discussion purposes on this, when this was presented to us, understanding that this was the recommendation of the DPW director, and appreciate all Bill's work, we didn't really discuss at the last meeting, the alternative, which was to go with the same trash pickup that we have today, meaning regular weekly trash pickup and weekly recycling pickup in the bins that we have. And I think that the council would have done well, you know, to compare both of those, and I think it's been mentioned that MTG, who would do the same that we have today, wasn't going to charge us any interest in working with us in deferring the payment for the first year. I have a question for Peter. I am a little concerned about the process here. While the council did take a vote last, at the last meeting to award the contract to Waste Management, it seems as though after that happened, and after another council member put this on the agenda for reconsideration, we went back to only one of the vendors that was the finalist, and admittedly, they're sort of in two different categories, but we went back to Waste Management and asked them if they could do better than the 15.9% interest. It doesn't appear that we ever contracted, contacted the vendor who was the low bidder in the other category, and while they weren't charging us interest, they weren't really given an opportunity to say, "Gee, we'd like to be more competitive either." And frankly, that, that concerns me, especially because it didn't happen until after somebody asked for reconsideration on this.
So, if you were to vote in favor of reconsideration, that would take you back, as if, you know, nobody would ever happen, so obviously, you'd have all the bidders that were responsive to that bid, you could defer it to another meeting, look at all those bidders, or you could decide, "We're not satisfied with any of the bidders, we want to send out another RFP," especially given the fact that there was this issue that came up in the interim that wasn't originally in the first RFP. You could decide, rather than going with the bidders that we currently have in front of us, we want to give everyone a chance to respond, and then respond to the documents, and include specifically in the RFP, how will you deal with the town, given that we have this issue? So that, that is an option that you could pursue.
Madam President.
Let him finish.
I thought he was done.
You're all set. Mr. LeBeau?
If we go back for new bids right now, we'll have nobody to pick up trash as of July 1st. We don't have a contract, we don't have an extension with who we have right now. I don't think we do, I'd have to ask Bill if that's all right.
Well, that's, that's a question for the Town Administrator.
We, at the moment, compared with the bill of the day on this, we don't have an extension, but we're prepared to go back to our current vendor and ask if they'd give us a month extension, or whatever we might need. We don't know the answer.
If he doesn't give us an extension, where are we sitting?
We have no, we have no service.
So, and also, what you could do is, if a motion for reconsider passed, you could continue the actual motion to another meeting, see if you can get an extension, and, or if it determines, and look into other responsive bidders, and consider whether you wanted to go out again for a?
Madam President?
You're done?
Yes.
No, I have a follow-up question. So, it looks like what we had were two, two bidders that we were mostly interested in, the Waste Management and the MTG. This is, so, this is a question, if, if we then went to Waste Management and asked them for information, and could you do a little bit better, could we not just then ask MTG? Would we have to go out for a whole nother RFP?
No.
Well, because those are the last, those were the two, I thought those were the two competing bidders, so if we've already done one, rather than do the RFP and, you know, go along like that, is it possible to then just say to, what is it?
MAGA.
Yeah, MAGA. Okay, would you give us, and I don't even know what their response would be, I have no idea, but I just wondered if that's a possibility?
You, you could do that as well, so if you voted on the motion to reconsider?
Yeah.
You'd still have all of the successful, or all of the responding bids in front of you, and you could?
you, and you could ask the Administrator to reach out to each one and see if they would all, what they could do to work with this situation that came up, and then report back and, and give you an array of options.
Well, Madam President, excuse me, go ahead.
No, it's okay. Ms. McReapy?
The clarification being, as of the last council session, you voted the contract be awarded to Waste Management, and I, and this is a question for the solicitor, I don't think we have any reason until you reconsider, if you choose to reconsider, we have no reason to talk to any of the other bidders because the awarded contract was to Waste Management.
It would have to be out of the...
So, so if you choose to open it up again for bid, well then, of course, we can go back to all four or five of them, whoever bid, although Waste Management, Mega, were the only ones that were remotely responsive to either. So that's probably who we would go to.
So, before I finish, there's, there is one more point I'd like to make, Madam President, if that's okay?
Proceed.
One of the issues here that, is that we're comparing, you know, an apples and an oranges situation, and that seems to have gotten a little lost in the shuffle. And we went out to bid originally, the bid, the base bid was for trash service like we have today, which was weekly pickup of your garbage and weekly pickup of the recyclables in the same bins and containers we all have.
Madam President, that is incorrect.
You can't interrupt me.
Just give it a moment.
And then alternative bids, because we wanted to consider the alternatives for going for the possibility of looking at using automated. So we also asked for various combinations of alternative bids. So while Waste Management was the lowest bidder, regardless of the interest or not, for a partially automated system, MTG or Mega was the low bidder for what we have today. And I couldn't do this at the last meeting because honestly, with the, out the interest numbers, I couldn't figure the math out, and I couldn't back out from what I had, what the interest was. But I would like to just point this out. Mega's bid for what we have today, and again, this is a little bit of an apples to oranges comparison, was $666,000. Waste Management's bid for trash like we have today, but automated every other week, recycling, was $645,480. However, their total bid is actually higher, it's actually 651-320, because as part of doing that automated recycling, they're going to put a roll-off container at the landfill to hold the recyclables. I think it's $5,840 a year to put that at the landfill.
Can I correct, if I may?
Yes, please do.
That 5,000, they priced it individually per pull, so they have a base price for curbside, and they priced it individually per pull at the landfill. So if we do 20, only, only 20 pulls, we're only getting charged for 20 pulls. We gave them an estimate to do, based on how we're doing it right now, and they came back with an individual price per pull, and that's what that, based on the estimate of 26 pulls for paper, 28 pulls for recyclables, that just at the landfill, that's what that, that 5,000...
That's what that 5,000 is.
Right, and the 666 number with Mega, that includes the pulls at the landfill.
Right. Right, so, but...
But that has nothing to do with the automated side of...
I realize it doesn't have anything to do with the automated side, but it is in fact part of their, their bid.
Correct.
It's, it's part of their bid.
Yep.
So their total bid is 651-320.
Correct.
Okay, that's a difference of $14,680 a year. So the savings, or presumed savings, if we go this way, is $14,680 a year. However, in order to get that savings, we have to buy equipment that we don't have. We have to buy the bins. And the bins are $318,780. So if you're going to say, we're going to go with automated, some automated recycling or some other system because we're going to get savings, then you have to calculate what the savings are. And so when you actually back it all out, you've got to, before you realize the savings, pay for the cost of the equipment that you had to invest in to get the savings. So if you take the cost of the bins, which is $318,780,000, and you divide that by the amount of money that we'll save every year, which is $14,680, you don't actually see any savings for 22 years based on these numbers. It will take us 22 years of savings to pay off what we spent on the bins. Now, I realize that, and none of us know where the future of recycling is going, and maybe in 10 years from now, there won't be companies like Mega that still will do it the old-fashioned manual way, but they exist today, and as long as there's a market for that, those companies will exist. My big concern right now is that we're going to close the landfill in three years, and that's a very big crossroads for this community, because we have no idea how much it's going to cost when we close that landfill. I don't mean the capping, I mean taking our trash to Johnston, and how much that is going to cost us. And the pay-as-you-throw bags will go away unless the voters decide to keep them and do something else with the money once the landfill's closed. We're going to be at a really big crossroads as to what we're going to do as a municipality about trash. Maybe people decide they don't want municipal trash, or maybe we go to an enrollment program, or who knows? But the idea that we're going to spend $318,000 on bins, that we're not sure, first of all, we're not going to, you know, get a return on our investment and, and get a savings for 22 years based on today's numbers, but that in three, in four years, when the landfill's closed, may actually be obsolete, because we've decided to do anything else completely different around trash, just doesn't seem to me like it's, it's a good time to be doing this. So I would just like to point out that we do have an option, and, and when you look at it that way, when you look at, when you look at it in terms of the, the equipment that you have to buy to get this supposed savings, forget the apples to oranges, all of a sudden, Mega really becomes the lowest bidder and the less expensive option to stay with.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. There's a, there's a lot of stuff that Counselor Hilton just said, but I think that, you know, we need to start right at the beginning and point out that this decision came out of the Landfill and Recycling Committee at the request of the Director. We spent several months going over this, and Counselor Hilton, as a member of the committee, should know that. Unfortunately, the one meeting that Counselor Hilton attended was only one of the meetings that we discussed this. Sorry, I digress, I digress.
Excuse me, let's be honest about, I missed the last meeting where it was voted. Please don't make aspersions that you can't back up.
Please keep the personalities out of this. Let's just stick with the facts.
All right. As far as return on investment, I think the primary return on investment for brand-new bins is what you see around town when you drive through all the different areas on trash day. If you drove down Highland Road on Mon, or today, which is trash day for Highland Road, you would see the number of broken bins. All you have to do is drive around this town. The bins that we have for our residents are deplorable. This is an opportunity for us as a council and us as a community to do something for our residents and get them bins that are going to last beyond 15 minutes, which is what happens when you have manual, when you have manual recycling pickup. The bins fly everywhere, the bins blow around, this was a huge consideration for the Landfill Recycling Committee, and part of, you know, honestly, being conservation-minded, thinking about the beautification of this town and not wanting to have our waste spilling out into the streets.
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau?
At $750,000 a year, costing the town payers, the taxpayers, $2.18 a week to pick trash up, and that's at 748 and change, I'm going to round it up to $750,000. Everybody I spoke to in town over the last few days since this reconsideration went, 99 percent of them don't want to go to the dump, they don't want to do anything except for have their trash picked up like they have for the whole existence of this town, as long as trash was able to pick up. So it's $2.18. The people at home need to know that that's what, that's the money it costs to have your trash picked up at your door every week, or recycles every other week, or however it works out. We can't even take a chance on not having our trash picked up. It's a basic service that everybody wants.
Madam President, I also...
Ms. Medeas.
I received several phone calls to the opposite at my home. People were concerned about the increase in taxes, they were concerned about the size of the recycle bin, many other things. So for everyone that you talked to, I haven't, and I'll be honest with you, I haven't talked to one person that was for this. So I think we're just talking to different people, but there are different points of view here in town.
Madam President? Is anybody going to be given a chance to say a few words on this matter?
Certainly.
Madam President, seeing how I brought up the issue, I'm not saying do away with trash pickup, I'm just saying we should look at the contract closely before we get into something that's going to cost us a lot of money down the road that we didn't realize. That's, that's what I'm saying. We could stay with the same trash pickup we have, I'm not saying do away with trash pickup, I'm just saying let's look at the contract and make sure we make the right decision. That's all I'm saying. I agree, we've got to have trash pickup. I agree.
Madam President.
I think it's the most cost-effective for the community is trash pickup, rather than having a transfer station and people taking their trash to a transfer station. It makes no sense to do that. I think we all agreed to that back in January when we met on, on trash pickup, January 30th, we all discussed that, we said it's a basic service, and we all agreed that we should continue, it's most cost-effective if, if the town does that.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I just have a question for Counselor Perry. Since you are obviously the one who brought this back up, what further information do you need in order to make a decision?
Well, I would like to see what Mega would offer as far as interest, which I heard they would waive the interest, and they are the low bidder.
So...
To continue what we have now and then see where we're going down the road if, with the landfill, because we, like Counselor Hilton said, we don't know what the landfill's going to do in two years or three years. We may be doing this, and then we're stuck with something that we're not going to need later on. We're going to have to haul our trash somewhere else.
So, if I may just respond, so that landfill topic is something that we do speak extensively about at the Landfill Recycling Subcommittee meetings, and I know our Chair is in the back here, I've, I've seen a couple of the members as well, but all, we, as far as the landfill goes, the three-year number that's out there, that may not be entirely accurate. We probably have closer to five years, so...
We might, we may have two.
Well, we have at least three, I mean, Director Anderson has actual estimates on what's going into the landfill, and one of the key considerations too, as we look at the larger recycling bins, is it's actually going to promote more recycling. And with more recycling means less waste is going into the landfill, means we have a longer extension on the life of the landfill, which means we don't have to pay 70 to 80 dollars per ton to send our stuff to Central. So there is a, there is a real consideration, I think.
One of, one of the problems I have there is I got some calls from people who said, if those bins are that big, I'm going to put my trash in a bag and take it to the landfill. I'm not going to bother dealing with the bins, because they're too heavy and they're too bulky. So, I mean, I don't know, you know, we play devil's advocate, I don't know which way they'll go. It could, it could help and it could not, I don't know. But I just, I just wanted to bring it up so we can discuss it and make the right decision before we move on. That's all I wanted to do.
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan?
Just to say, the, the responses that I got were 100 percent against the Waste Management bid, the higher bid and the higher, the new bins. It was, I didn't get anybody who was saying, let's, that's a great deal.
Madam President.
That's just, that's just what I was told, that's all.
Mr. Edwards?
Sure. I, I just want to echo that. I also did receive a couple of people sending me emails, but it was all copy and pasted from one person. Now, that being said, I do want to also mention that our new Administrator, who lives in Newport, has extensive experience with these, because Newport recently made the switch, something that we talked about again at the Landfill Recycling Committee meetings, and maybe it's worth asking our Director, or our Town Administrator, his opinion on the bins.
Actually...
I don't think I want to answer.
Just be smart. Well, I, Madam President, just because you use the bins doesn't mean you're an expert on the bins, and just because you trash is the bins.
One, one of the things I will mention, Counselor Edwards, is that one of the landfill committee members told me that he thought the money from the pay-to-throw could go towards this, and realized that it couldn't, and that kind of changed his mind when, after the fact, he thought they could use that, but when he found out it was a restricted account, he said, I didn't know that, that would have made a difference, in my opinion, so, I think.
And, and just one other thing that, just to let you know, I did get some emails that I'm sure everybody does, that are cut and paste, but they were not mostly that. So I got a variety of people as well, and I'm assuming you did too.
How can you tell who cut and paste?
I just, same way, but it doesn't matter in a way. It really doesn't matter. Someone said that they're against it, they're against it.
I, I mean personally, I think anybody...
Ms. Hilton?
Personally, anybody, whether you take the time to write it yourself, and not everybody is a great writer or feels comfortable, if you take the time to somehow put, whether you copied it for somebody or not, but you put something on paper and you send it to the council and say, this is how I feel, it all counts the same.
Madam President, may I offer a perspective? First, thank you for the, your, your consideration that I'm an expert in, but I, yes, in Newport, we do that, and I'm happy with it, but, you know, we get picked up every week. But the perspective I want to offer here is that, that, you know, we can look at this as kind of an opportunity, because we've effectively done, although through a securitized route, a request for information, we now know what the costs of recycling would be with a couple bidders, we know what the cost of moving this forward with another vendor to just do the traditional, and we know the cost of these carts, more or less, within a couple hundred thousand dollar type of investment it would be. That, you now have information to make a policy decision, and all the Director Anderson and I need at this point, or what, what we are begging for, is a policy decision of what direction you want to take the town, recycling or not, even staying in the trash business, because it's perfectly possible that we could put out a bid for a concession that individual residents just go and contract, or at least have a concession, get their own, their own services, or not. So, but we need some guidance, because it's now churning back to, you know, square one where I presume you were several months ago, when the Landfill and Recycling Committee took this up as a, as a topic of conversation and policy.
Madam President? No, go ahead.
Ms. Ryan?
Well, were you going to, Denise?
I was just going to ask if we could hear from the audience, because I know people came to talk on this.
Then let me just, okay, so, one other thing, it's not just about trash. It is about trash, it is also about the budget. The budget is looming, and it is no reason that we have to do it. And it, it does not hurt the town to take another couple of years to, to get us in better, a better sense. It's, there's no emergency here. We don't have to do it. And so that's, that's the perspective that I'm more coming from. We've already seen the amount of money that is climbing, climbing, climbing. So that's my, my, that's where I'm coming from.
Do you mean not do it at all, you just mean stay with what we have?
I mean stay with, stay with what we have, yeah, sorry, that's, that's what I mean.
Okay, I just want to correct some information in some things that were said. So we did get the spreadsheet from Town Administrator and the DPW Director, and on this sheet, there are the bids for both Waste Management and Mega Disposal for each of the options. When we looked at it, and I remember Counselor Perry even asked if we could go with the 666 bid from Mega, and then maybe in year two or three, jump over to the recycling, the automated recycling bi-weekly. the automated recycling bi-weekly. And when we looked at the cost of items one and number six in comparison, it was, waste management was 645 roughly versus 700K. But also, the cost of the bins were exorbitant. It was 95K per year versus 138K per year, which is a difference of about 45K. So, you're paying a third more. So, we did review the option of the recycling, similar to the waste management option, for Mega. We did do that. And we eliminated that as an option because it was too cost prohibitive on the bins. So, our options were down to the 666 for Mega versus the 645 plus the 5,840 to a total of 651. So, we had 666 for one versus 651 plus the cost of the bins. And it all boiled down to the cost of the bins. We talked about this. That's what we were arguing over. We were talking about the cost of the bins. Do you want it or you don't? That's where I said it was a policy decision. So, that's where we are. And now we'll take public comment because I think we need to hear from the public.
Is this okay? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe not.
You know what? I'll sit down. Good evening. Deborah Polish, Lake Road. First of all, thank you for taking public comment. I know these decisions seem a lot easier than they always are. And I do understand that the DPW and the landfill committee have come back with recommendations, but not unlike you often do during your budget cycle. You have a larger perspective often than your individual committees and departments. I know certainly on the school committee, that happens with us. You have to look at the needs of your taxpayers as well as your budget, unfortunately, your budget constraints. My one, and Ms. Hilton touched on it a little bit, but not quite, one of my concerns is, what I'm hearing is that it's $15,000 in savings, but it's really not correct to classify it as savings. You are reducing the service by 50%. So, what it is, is a cost reduction. So, what you kind of, and that's where I'm struggling. You don't have an apples-to-apples comparison. You can't say MTG, what would they charge us for the same service if they came back and we said, "What could you do for curbside if you only came every other week? What would your bid be?" You know, we don't have that true comparison if automation is really going to save us money because we don't know. I would imagine they're going to come back with something a lot, a greater reduction than 20%. So, is it really 15% savings when you're only, you know, you're reducing your service by 50%? It's like if your electric company says, "I'm not going to charge you $500 a year. I'm going to charge you 400, but I'm only going to give you electricity every other week." It's a 50% reduction in service, but only a 20% reduction in cost. So, I'm not really sure, and I don't know the answer.
Madam President.
And I don't know that you guys do either. That is the cost savings you're getting here really competitive? It may or may not be. You know, I don't know. So, that was definitely one of my concerns. The other thing that concerns me is the savings for waste management definitely are contingent on a renewal. And if you look at this, that contract is up in 12 of 2020. There are two election cycles between now and then. So, it's going to be probably a very different council. So, I don't think that we can count on necessarily them getting the rebid. Finally, you know, I just, I think everybody wants to move in the 21st century and I think definitely automation's the way to go. But for some reason, we just don't seem to be, we don't seem to be realizing the savings from automation. I mean, if you think about it, they have less people, they have less insurance, they have less, you know, workers' comp. And I would think that we'd be seeing a lot more than just $15,000 a year. That's not a lot. And perhaps that's because we didn't bid for both at the same time. That might actually be driving that and that's the problem. But I do appreciate that, you know, we want to move ahead with that and I do think that's the direction we're going. But I think for now, and I'm a numbers person, policy, you're right, this is a policy decision. I'm just looking at the numbers. We're spending 264,000 more for a 50% reduction in service. May or may not, those cost savings may not be actually competitive. We're paying interest on debt and all of those things. I would ask you to consider, and I think, I don't remember, I apologize for whoever made the recommendation, that we do either go back to MTG and say, you know, "What can you do every other day?" Or, you know, "Push the other vendors." Or, you know, "Accept the lower bid for now when we know what's going to happen with the landfill and we can go back out and bid both services and know that in fact it is competitive." Because you do not have apples-to-apples right now. And I'm not sure that we can, that this is. Thank you very much. I know this isn't, you know, it's always easier to be over here than over there.
Can I answer the questions?
Apples-to-apples.
We do have apples-to-apples bids. We put out, we put out collection, we put out, we put out prices, requested prices for seven items. Included manual trash pickup, manual collection of recyclables, collection of yard waste, collection of, transportation of bulky items, an alternate bid for collection and transportation of trash automated, and an alternate bid for collection and transportation of recyclables automated. And then we also had an alternate bid for transportation recyclables with the containers, with the vendor supplying the containers. We have them for four vendors. So, we do have those costs for Mega built in. And as part of the recyclables automated, after speaking to Lincoln, when Socket, a bunch of towns and knowing what my town is, when you switch over to automated from manual, most communities, almost all, go to bi-weekly recycling. That's why you need the bigger bin. Unlike Newport, which has manual, which has the every weekly bin, is because they take that same truck, and I'll have Waste Connect to correct me if I'm wrong, they take the same truck because it goes to Johnson. Half the truck drops off at the MRF, half the truck drops at the landfill. We don't have that scenario in Tiverton right now. But we do have an apples-to-apples bid for pricing.
I just want to clarify. When I say apples-to-apples, I mean the service, not automated versus automated or curbside versus curbside. I mean pure service to us. You come every week or you don't come every week. That's the comparison I was looking for.
Louise Durfee, Highland Road. And I want to talk about the bins. People have talked about the economics and the financial end and I think I really have to commend Mr. Perry for putting this out because this has been terribly unclear in getting the information on comparisons and costs until this meeting. I got to tell you, it has been foggy bottom. So, I appreciate the work that has been done, but to move the town into a new direction, believe me, you really do need a lot more information than what you've had at this point. But I want to get back to the bins. I was just sitting next to a gentleman, said, "I live on a dirt road." And I said, "Well, I don't live on a dirt road, but I have a dirt driveway that extends around the house. It has, there's no, there's no macadam, there's no asphalt." And for me to be even contemplating dragging a 96-gallon bin with newspapers, a two-week accumulation of newspapers, plus the all, the other stuff that you accumulate, is sort of beyond possibility. And what is the consequence of that? And I am not alone. I have a neighbor who's 91 and her driveway is 45-degree angle. But we are not alone. There are many people in this town who live off macadam. If you have a driveway and you have 30 feet of asphalt to roll that out, that's a very different ballgame. But I don't have that. And I think of the snow and the ice and just a beautiful summer day. Are you really going to do that? So, to plunge ahead and talk about it as the 21st century, it ain't. You know what's going to happen? I mean, I take my recycling very seriously, as I suspect everybody in this room does. And I have a lot of it. So, if I'm confronted with trying to get that gorilla out of the garage into the street, tell me, what are you going to do? You going to put it in a maroon bag? That goes against my very grain, but you've left me a very bad choice. Now, I've heard the argument, "Well, leave it on the street." And I just heard you, Mr. Edwards, say that one of the unsightly things is these bins that are left in the town. So, that is not an option, to have a 97-gallon or a 67-gallon bin out there all week long. If the council is going to embark on a new plan of this type, you need to do more than just give it to the landfill committee. You really need to do some planning. The analogies of other communities, of Newport, with all due respect. Newport is a very different community. There's a reason why that's called Tiverton Heights that runs almost into Fall River. The town is on a hill, a large portion of it. It doesn't lend itself to this kind of roll out the gorilla with your recycling. I mean, I'm not alone. I'm older, but I'm not alone. And the town is a very mixed community. But you need to do some planning and experimentation before you embark on such a change. And you need to have the proper financial information even before you act. So, I could only close by saying, "Think about this." Because these things come back to haunt councils. And people don't forget, they're going to be reminded about the trash every single week. So, I have to tell you, think about this a little bit more. What people like myself do, have a long driveway or a long road, you put it in the back of the car, take the car out, dump it. But that's a very different thing. Tiverton has one of the highest recycling rates in Newport County. It was in Newport Daily News not so long ago, this week, as contrasted with Portsmouth. Unlike Mr. Edwards, I think that recycling will go down because you don't have an alternative. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jerry Bedore. I live on Saudi Pond Avenue in Tiverton, so one half the streets of Fall River. I live on the Tiverton side of the street. Fall River went to these bins about two years ago. And one of the, I'm not a lover of these bins because most of my neighbors, a lot of my neighbors, in fact, the three neighbors right in front of my street keep the bins on the road. They've got the same blue bins they've been using for years, drive up their driveway, dump it into the big bin at the end, and same thing with the trash cans. On a trash day, if you go down Crenda Road or you go down Stafford Road, all those roads, Boldocks Lane, there are a number of streets there that the Tiverton trash trucks never come down, including Saudi Pond. Fall River has no trouble with the trash trucks, but in the 40 years I've lived there, Tiverton has never had a trash truck come down. So, I have to cop my, I live on the dirt part of the road, cop my trash to Wood Avenue. Half the neighbors cop the trash up to Crenda Road to do it. There are huge piles of trash and recyclables on those roads on trash day. I don't know about anybody else here, but I can't fit a big bin like that in the back of my car or my trunk to cop it down the road. My 80-year-old neighbor who just passed away two months ago, suddenly, she lives about a quarter mile down the road. There's no way that she could have ever gotten a bin over to the paved road to do that. How do we deal with those people? That's what's not clear about going down this pin. I've got a son who lives in Rochester, New Hampshire. They do the trash pickup. You drive around the town and there are a lot of trash bins around. And what happens when the wind blows, the coves come up, I see it, my neighbors across the street, and the trash is all over the place. It's something to consider as we go down these paths.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hello, Mike Dicotis, Louise Drive. I know this is a very tough decision for a lot of people, so I don't envy anyone that's here to make the decision, but I did want to put some feedback in just today, driving up Bogomash Road. It must have been trash day and there's lots of bins. And I know that Patriot Disposal probably won't be our company we're using going forward, but over the years we've had them, they've done a very poor job of handling my trash and recycle bins. Most people that I talk to say they've seen them chuck them and smash them and throw them in the road. And some people still think Styrofoam is recyclable. And I've personally seen the employees take the Styrofoam and throw them in the wind in people's yard. And I think that's what that's on there for. So, I just wanted to say, no matter what the decision is, can we keep in mind, there's two things about Tiverton that come up time and time again. One is keeping it beautiful and number two is keeping taxes low. And with this decision, you can't do both, but you can sure try to think about what you want more. And I'm not advocating either way. I'm just saying, I've seen very deplorable behavior by the employees of Patriot and I've asked them not to throw my bins and chuck my bins and kick my bins. And I've seen them throw things and they get in the wind and they go on the road and I'm the guy that has to walk down to the corner of Fish Road and pick them up myself. And that's just my two cents about what you'd have when you have the smaller bins. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Can we just ask Bill about, because Saudi Pond, there's many streets like that in town.
Correct. How do I, all right. As far as the bin goes, I have a, my neighbor has a driveway gravel. Mine, I live on a hill, so mine goes down. My neighbor is 82 and every day, and every other week, she takes the 84-gallon bin, it's 96-gallon bin, and walks it down a gravel driveway and she doesn't complain. I'm not saying it's right, it's wrong, but I mean, when the town will be screeched, that's what we went to. And they went to bi-weekly recycling from every week they were collecting it. There is an option to make the bin smaller, but again, it's volume we're talking about because if we switched to every other week, that big 96-gallon bin fits four of the small blue bins, four and a half, actually. So, that's the reason you go to the bigger bin. Now, I don't know if it, again, when we put the bids on the street, we ask for every other week because that's what most commuters are doing and that's how I base the bid on. What most communities, when I talk to Resourced Recovery, that's what most commuters do. There are streets in town that do not have trash service on the street. For one reason, it was never accepted road and we could look at those again and decide what we could do. That's an option, too. One thing I would like to add, you know, next week is, this weekend's the holiday weekend. July 1st, we technically don't have a vendor. I do not have the equipment, I'm not just, I'm just telling you for this informational purpose, I don't have the equipment to do something about this. I can't go down and start picking up trash on people's lawns or off the curb. I could do the yard waste, that worked, it was easy, it was workable. This is a total different animal. We don't have the equipment. Now, you know, Patriot's bid when they came back was $834,000 for something that they do right now, $576,000 manual to continue as we're doing now. Of course, their automated price was the same and I really can't explain it besides the fact that probably Patriot doesn't want to do the job anymore. I don't know what, again, I don't know, we don't have any options in town. I don't have a transfer station that I can open up and in the interim till we can decide what to do, that's an option. The landfill will not support the entire town. And I don't think the residents in all of Tiverton are going to drive all the way to the landfill to dump their waste and their recyclables. So, again, I think we're left with a few options right now. I will try tomorrow morning to see if I can extend the contract a month, if that's the choice you decide to go. I would like to see us go to automated, but again, that's not my decision, that's yours. I would like to see us go to automated, but again, that's not my decision, that's yours. Don't much more I can say.
So you did mention, are there options on the trash bins?
We, yes, so, so Waste Management, I can let them speak to it if they'd like to. Jim, Jim Fromm, he can tell you where we're looking to. We could reduce the size of the, the bin size.
So.
People would, we would deliver ninety-six, if they would like a smaller one, we could deliver a smaller bin. That's not an issue, if they would like a smaller bin.
Okay, so I think one of the things that we did not do at the last meeting was we did not discuss the rollout of the program. We just made the decision to go with waste management. And I believe there was a presentation, but we didn't get to it as far as the rollout. Because certainly, even if we have waste management, they would not do recycling next week. That, the bins are not there, that would take time to.
No, if, if, if we sign the contract tomorrow, they're ready to go July first. But we're not automated, we're going, when we start this, we're going to start manual pickup on July first. The, the bins with the, after the order won't be, we won't be looking at that now until probably the end of August, September timeframe, when we could make the switch over.
Is there a problem with having Waste Management speak?
No, it's been open to the public, so all members that want to speak can't speak. Subject to time constraint.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Nocella from Waste Management. I appreciate the decision that you have to make, it's, it's a difficult one. And what we've found is most communities are going in this direction. I don't want to call it twenty-first century or twenty-fifth century, but it's, it's a way to, you know, provide some aesthetics for the community. So the most recent one that we converted was Lincoln. But I, you know, I heard some of the comments, and they're the same comments I hear at every public, you know, hearing I go to when you're trying to introduce a new service. This, you know, there's the unknown that you have to deal with. But if you think about the communities that do it, somebody mentioned Hills. Hilliest city barring San Francisco is actually Fitchburg, Massachusetts. So tidbit for you, they've had automated collection now for five years. It, it can work, and we just have to have a good working relationship with, you know, the DPW to, to figure out the, the people that, you know, need special accommodations. Talking about the, you know, the streets that trucks can't get down. Those are all things that we're very, very well-versed in. And if you talk to folks, public works officials, from, you know, Providence to Lincoln to Barrowville, Rhode Island, to Cranston, to Newport, all that have this type of service, I don't think that should necessarily be the biggest factor for you to, you know, to decide. We are able to provide service to many, many communities that have similar demographics and, and road structure. I think it's a policy decision as to whether you want to move in this direction. And, you know, if you move the decision three to five to seven years down the road, I think you're only going to find the gap will continue to get larger and larger and larger between a manual collection system and an automated collection system because of the workforce shortage that, that, you know, we start to run into to get people to manually collect trash and recycle. It's a really hard job, and we're finding it harder and harder and harder to get labor to do that type of work. And I, I, I get it, there's a vendor that, you know, is here to do it today. But, you know, again, so wasn't Patriot too, and you see what happened to the price in a pretty short period of time. So I, I just think that, you know, we can really do an excellent job of rolling the program out to consider, you know, the comments that came from the general public. And, and if you talk to other city officials who have went through this, they're going to tell you the same thing when you come to a hearing. People will bring those, those comments up and concerns up. But after you roll a program out, it's, it's overwhelmingly supported by the majority of the residents and the public. So I just wanted to pass that on. Good luck with your decision.
Okay. So we have options on the barrels, it appears. And I just want to go through some of the questions. I don't think Mike Silvy is here. He did send an email to the town. One of the questions, I'll just go through them. Waste management contract will cost the town a total of three-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-eight-hundred more over the term of the contract. Yes, and that's directly attributed to the cost of the bins. Recycling pickup reduced to every other week instead of weekly. That's correct. At our January thirtieth trash talk meeting, we talked about trash pickup at that meeting. And we discussed the different options. And we even asked for a hand vote of the public if they would be agreeable to going to every other week recycling pickup. And it was overwhelmingly, they raised their hand, said yes. If it would reduce the cost, they would definitely be agreeable to that. Says the savings related to the service-only component of the contract cannot be realized for several years until the cost of bins is absorbed. That's correct. The major difference between this contract with Waste Management and the one with MEGA with all manual pickup is the cost of the bins. Conversion to automated trash pickup will require purchase of additional bins at similar cost in a few years. If we ever go to automated trash pickup, yes, you would have to buy bins for trash pickup. But we're not saying that that's a policy decision we're discussing now. That would be something in the future. That's, what we're talking about is recycle, automated recycle every other week. Waste management proposal applies an exorbitant interest rate to repay debt. That was true, I agree with that. And certainly, the town administrator and the, Mr. Anderson, the DPW director, went back to them to review that situation. And it went from fifteen, close to sixteen percent to five percent. Even six-year projections, which consider conversion to automated trash pickup, again, we are not talking automated trash pickup. And purchase of compatible trash bins indicate no substantial savings. Again, we're not talking automated trash pickup. Waste management proposal includes recycling bins only. That's correct. So the issues, claims of issues related to trash being strewn on town streets will not be addressed since trash pickup method and recyclables, receptacles remain the same. Yes and no. The recycled bins, the small ones, the blue bins, they don't have a lid. And when the wind blows and there's paper on top, it blows it out. And it blows it downhill. I'm down at the bottom of a hill, and it blows it downhill. And I'm picking up the recyclables from up the street. As far as the trash goes, the trash are required to be in trash bags. So the bags are tied up, they're put on the side of the road. Certainly, you do have some cases where critters get into them and the trash ends up on the street. In some cases, people have bought their own trash bins so they can put the bags in there so that those critters can't get to it. We're a rural community, that's going to happen, critters do get into trash. Nine, the persp- 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 savings claims are tied to the number of people required to operate the pickup equipment. Despite reducing resources from six people to two people and reducing pickup frequency to bi-weekly, Waste Management passes savings of only three-hundred dollars per week to the town for the service component. That is correct. Again, it's a policy decision as to which way you want to go. It's, again, not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges. If you're comparing apples to apples, certainly, MEGA's cost for this particular service is seven-hundred thousand a year. And it has a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand per year for the recycling, recycling bins. The ninety-six gallon bins are extremely heavy and large, I agree. And will be very difficult for elderly residents to navigate. We've just heard that we have some options for that, for smaller bins. Certainly, I have, since our January thirtieth trash meeting, I have put out my recycling and my trash every other week. And it has fit, because I'm, two people in one house, I have very limited recycling for two people, and very limited trash. I could fit my two weeks' worth of trash in my trash bin and my two weeks of recycling in one blue bin. So certainly, yeah, I don't think I'd need a ninety-six gallon bin. But would I have one? Yeah, I'd tell my neighbors if they need to put extra recycling in, put it in my bin. This one, research has shown that people throw non-recycles into large litted bins, increasing the cost of recycling and reducing the value of its byproducts. It refers to an article, I did read the article. It was based upon, I think, Washington DC. I think we're a rural community, and we do have, as mentioned, we have a great recycling record here in town. People are, are for recycling. So I think, from my perspective, I wanted to answer these questions in public rather than in an email. And certainly, this form letter came from several different people to my email. And I wanted to have that out in public. Because I believe that these discussions need to be done in public, not in private sessions. Similar to Ms. Durfee, we did also receive an email from Cecil Leonard. Basically, both of your letters, the, from Louise Durfee and Cecil Leonard, basically two issues, the cost and then the sixty, the ninety-six gallon bins. Certainly, I can see, again, if you're a single person in a, in a household or two people in a household, maybe you don't need that ninety-six gallon bin. And it, from what we've now understood, we have options for smaller bins. Again, still two week, every two weeks with, with the recycling pickup. As far as the cost goes, I think, as we mentioned the last time, it's a policy decision. And the cost difference all along has been the cost of the recycling bins. Bottom line, that's it. That's the, that's the, the cost of this, is the cost of the recycling bins. It's three-hundred and eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty dollars for the cost of the recycled bins. And that's spread out over the three, three-and-a-half-year term of the contract for Waste Management. Again, if you look at the other options, and we have even one that doesn't even do any type of manual pickup. The cost in comparison to MEGA was a difference of forty-five thousand per year for the recycled bins. So that's, that's the bottom line. It's, it's the cost of the recycled bins. And in effect, with the reduced savings, the reduced, the cost reduction based upon getting, and I'll call it cost reduction, based upon doing the automated recycling every other week, it actually reduces the cost of the bins to two-hundred-and, actually, it was right here. Two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. So you're taking the savings, the cost reduction from going to the automated recycling and applying that to the bins so that your bins basically cost you two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand rather than three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. So again, it all boils down to the bins.
Could you, members, and could you clarify that, you lost me on the math there?
I'm going by.
If you go, if you go automated recycling, she's right. But if you go what we have today, MEGA is four, forty-six-thousand-eight-hundred dollars cheaper.
Right, no, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not understanding the, the reduction in the cost. Over what time period? How does the reduction, how do the bins reduce in cost from three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars to two-hundred-and-something-thousand dollars? Over what time period does that happen?
The three-year contract. And you said it yourself, there is a difference of fourteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-dollar difference between the two contracts, just for the services. So three years, three years of basically fifteen K is a forty-five-thousand-dollar reduction in, in the amount of the cost of the bins. Because we're saving on pickup services by going to.
I, I, now, I, I didn't understand the, I did not understand the time period that you were talking about. Thank you.
And on top of that, so, so it's the cost of the bins. We get some money back from recycling, R-I-R-I-C, correct? Resource recycling?
Not anymore.
Not anymore? So what do we have left in there, forty, forty K?
Oh, I looked at it the other day, it's thirty.
Forty-five K. So that is to be, but that's, those funds have to be specifically used for recycling, correct? So again, we could use the forty-five thousand to reduce the cost of the bins by the forty-five thousand, correct? If that would be the choice of the town administrator and the DPW director to present that to the town council. So again, two-hundred-and-sixty-four K, subtract another forty, forty-five thousand from it, you end up with a little over two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. For the cost of the bins over a three-year period. So that's where the policy decision comes in. Whether you want to spend the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. And certainly, there is going to be a rollout period. There would definitely be communication that would have to occur with residents. Certainly, there would be people who would need smaller bins. People would, on dirt roads, who are not on the main roads, we would have to deal with those situations individually. That would be the normal cost of events to roll out a program of this magnitude. So again, I, this is what we discussed the last time. I think we've discussed it in further detail tonight, and we've actually got a few more questions answered. I open up for any more comments. Ms. Zimia DeRis?
I would.
Ms. Mr. Perry?
After, you know, finding all this information out. And my key objective was to do what was best for the town and to try to save money on taxes. After this information, I'm going to go for the lobita. That's the way I feel.
And just one final comment, since you brought up the cost. We are talking about a hundred thousand or two-hundred-and-twenty thousand over three years. When you, and I really have to say, just to reiterate, in the seventeen-eighteen budget, there was already five-hundred-and-fifteen K, thousand dollars for the interest for the school bond. The fiscal year eighteen-nineteen would increase that with an additional six-hundred-and-twenty thousand for the principal on the school bond. Whether or not you choose mega disposal or Waste Management, you will still be paying an additional cost. And I think the cost for, because of this year's budget shortfall for trash, we don't have enough money in the budget for trash this year. We would be paying an additional.
To mega?
Mega would be.
One forty-one, over, over the course of the life of the contract, which is about seventy thousand a year.
Yeah, that's going with the six-six-six.
Seventy thousand over two years.
71,000 over two years. So in the 1819 fiscal year, it would be $71,000 for Mega versus how much for waste?
Waste management, well, in the case of Mega, there is no interest, so it's just 141 divided by two. In the case of waste management, it's 91 for the first three years and then 45,000 for the fourth option year. And that represents, well, actually, excuse me, those numbers are out of date now because it's the 12,000 a year has been brought down to significantly less. So, actually, I don't have those numbers in front of me. Do you have them, Bill? The principal is scheduled with 74,000. It's the interest.
2467 is the principal. And the interest, the first year is 7,246. The principal in the second year is, I'm sorry, the interest in the second year is 3,623. And there is no interest in the third year.
So...
You're paying 12, you're paying 12, 7, 10, 11,000 on top of the 217, 400.
So out of the 217, that's for the three years?
That's the balance, the difference in the balance. You're paying...
So how much is that, would we be paying on that bill for fiscal year 1819?
Well, I have it on this piece of paper from the administrator.
That's the pre-renegotiation of the 5%. 91,000 is no longer...
No, this is the 5%.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it is. So if you went with waste management, your fiscal year 19 payment would be 822,113.
What?
Before you slam your hammer, get this done, I have something I need to speak about.
Go ahead, Mr. LeBeau, while we're figuring out numbers.
Yeah, while you're playing with numbers over there. Is it an option that we can have, Bill? Because I'm not comfortable right now making a decision either way. Let's have a look at some numbers. You guys are throwing numbers around, so let's call Mega and see, hey, how much you're going to do it for us, because all we hear is the first year of interest with Mega. 666, zero interest the first year. But nobody's saying what's the second and third year are going to be through Mega.
Actually, Randy, they have given us a contract. That is a three-year contract price with no interest. That is a three-year price. We do know that, with no interest.
Well, maybe we can get them down then, if we're going to go that route, because everybody's talking tonight, well, listen, we're not doing the proper numbers. So we can't sit here and make a decision tonight without running numbers back with these distributors for the trash picking.
What I think you're asking them to do is, if you are getting a deferred payment of 141,000 from Mega, for instance, and they would like a repayment of that with no interest over two years, at 70,000, if you ask them, if we go back and ask them, can we pay you less? They're effectively making their bid less, which now we have, we may have a problem with the bid, with the bid process.
Yeah, I don't believe any of that stuff. I want to hear it from them. This has been going on for...
So I just want confirmation on...
Too many numbers thrown around, I might like to keep...
Is it 91,000?
Madam President, your question is, with the 5% interest that waste management is charging us, what is the total for fiscal year 1819? The one we're starting is coming, or one more year. What's the total amount that we're paying back?
So just on the repayment option, just on the repayment, right? Is that what you're asking? 79,713. Is that just on 2019, just for the repayment? And then fiscal '20, it's 76090. Yeah. And then fiscal year 2021, it's 72466.
That's just on the repayment.
That's just the repayment. That's not, the bid price going forward is, it's 742,400 through 2020. And then that drops, starts dropping down on 2021 and 2022. 2021, it's 696,860 for the service. And then 651,320 in 2022.
But the recyclable bins are in that cost?
The recyclable bins are all paid for in full by 2021. Right, and that's, those numbers include the bin cost, correct?
But fiscal year 2021 and 2022 are optional years. We'd have to renew the contract.
Well, the first six months are in 2021 or not. That's part of the contract.
Okay, so six months.
So six months in 2022.
So six months in 2021 and fiscal year 2022, those would only be the prices if we renewed the contract?
Correct.
And if we're not, and just to be fair here, if by that time, if we're not going to the tibber and the landfill anymore, we have no idea what their price, and we don't know what anybody's price is going to be to take the trash to Johnston. So we don't really know what that's going to, we know what they're going to charge us to pick up the trash in town, but we don't know what any vendor's going to charge us to take the trash to Johnston at that point.
For transportation costs, no.
Yeah, we don't, right.
We don't have those numbers in front of us, correct?
Right, I mean, no one has a crystal ball. I'm just clarifying that that's not prob, I mean, these are not the numbers that overall trash are going to cost us once the land...
Correct, just the same thing as Mega. That's not the same, that's not, because that's going to include transportation and disposal costs and everything else.
With any vendor, exactly. Joan, I would like to make a motion to move the vote, please.
All right. Do we need a second on that?
Second.
If you vote on that, if it passes, then you'd vote on the motion to reconsider it for the debate.
One second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed?
So now you have the motion on the floor, so you can vote on that to reconsider.
Right, so that called the question, the motion to reconsider, so...
So we have a motion on the floor to reconsider. And we had a motion that was made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? So the vote is 4 to 1. One abstention.
So at this point, this takes you back to the moment before you voted to award the bid. So you could either award the bid to one of the responsive bidders, or you could continue it.
I'd like to make a motion to continue it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to continue?
Till next meeting, so we can get some more information.
Till the next meeting.
Discussion?
Discussion.
We do have to check with Patriot, though, whether or not we have trash pickup in July.
That's correct.
And if we were to award this bid to Mega, do we know now, given where we are, whether or not they could start soon? I mean, I'm assuming they assume that they...
July 1st isn't a bid.
Right, but...
I don't know what they're going to look for or come back with when I call.
Madam President.
Motion to reconsider, motions on the floor. Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I know one of the considerations with waste management is, because they do so many municipalities, they have trucks, they have additional trucks in the fleet that they can put on the ground tomorrow, versus a company like Mega where they have to go out and actually acquire a truck for us. So depends on the availability of their trucks, I would imagine, as well. Just something else to consider.
We don't actually know that, though, right, Bill? If they have to get a truck ready, we don't know any of that.
I imagine they would have to get a truck, because, again, most companies don't keep trucks like that on the ground.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to continue until next week. All those in favor?
Well, one more discussion item. If we can, if we continue this to next week, and it's two weeks. Two weeks. If we continue this for two weeks, we're past the July 1st thing. If Patriot comes back and says, we're not going to help you out and give you a one-month extension, which is possible, right, because they don't really like us right now. So the question is, should we continue it that long, or should we potentially consider a shorter timeframe to reconvene based on information, so that we don't find ourselves with no trash pickup come July 1st?
Well, Madam President, if I may, since we, a lot of these last questions you've been asking, we don't know the answer. The only answer to those questions is, we don't know. So I suppose it's possible, we still have the time to call a special session towards the end of this week, to, we need 48 hours, so we could call one once we have a definitive answer.
And you could actually make in your motion to consider to, consider it to July 10th, or to direct the administrator to contact Patriot. And if they won't extend another week, you could have one contingent date that would be a special meeting, and if they will, you can continue to the July 10th date.
Why don't we just meet Thursday, June 29th, with all the answers? Well, try to get all the answers. Instead of, like, that it's the 29th, it's not July 1st, yeah?
Right, that's correct.
And then maybe we can make some...
That's Counselor LeBeau's day off, so I'm going to go ahead and say no.
You can't make it?
Nope. There's no way I can make Thursday.
Will we have information by Wednesday?
I'm going to place calls tomorrow morning.
How about those by Wednesday?
Nope.
I will also be unavailable on Wednesday.
Well, the main question is whether Patriot would continue at the existing price or a higher price. That's what the discussion will be. And the answer may be no, in which case, then you need a meeting. And the discussion would end up right here. I mean, exactly at this point that you're at right now, would be the discussion on a notional meeting on Friday, if Patriot says, no, we're not interested in helping you.
Well, even if we went with Mega, you don't know if they'll be available to pick up trash on July 1st.
That's the second set of questions, is Patriot, can you pick up, or, excuse me, Mega, can you start them in the first, a week from now?
Has Mega been notified about the prior vote?
Sure, they have.
Oh, they were here, okay. Who knows?
No, they're not here tonight.
No.
Madam President, I'm not just saying no because I want to put a corkscrew in this whole thing. I want to know what Mega's going to come back with. It's not just call Mega, will you do it? We want to give them a chance to lower their price.
But I don't think we can.
I don't think they're going to lower their price.
Then we need to go back out. We awarded the contract, and then we un-ordered the contract. And I want to, I would like to go back out. Let's get a month and go back out for bid for everything.
Well, that's possible, but I will point this out. Mega came in and said, this is our best offer. Waste Management came and said, this is our best offer. And that's last week, when we, or two weeks ago, that's what we had in front of us. And we voted on what we thought was Waste Management's best offer. Then, there was some discussion, and all of a sudden, Waste Management came back with another best offer. I don't know that, you know, first of all, I find that a little unusual. I'll just say that. But I'm not sure that, you know, because one vendor might operate that way, I mean, some of these vendors may have been, said, look, this really is my best offer. This is where I am. I don't know that, whether or not we have time to get into a rebidding of...
Well, we had time to go over this again. So I'd like to extend it for a month. We'll get an extension for a month, go back out, and let's see what their real best offers are. I give a lot of best offers out. They go down. And they'll go down. They want the business. So that's just my opinion. I'm one vote. That's my one vote, so...
We have a motion on the table to continue this to the next meeting, which is July 10th. Do we need to amend that to, or, based upon information from the town administrator and the DPW director, to meet prior to July 10th to deal with trash pickup?
Madam President, I'd just like to say something. I'm on vacation July 10th, so I would like to do this next week, so I will be available for it.
I will be unavailable all next week.
Well, then I'll just cancel my plan. It's fine, I'll be here.
Thank you, Counselor.
Put it to his vote. He made a motion, just voted on it.
Wasn't there another motion out? No, the motion right now is to continue this to July 10th, correct?
Continue to the next meeting, which is July 10th.
So that's the motion. All those in favor? Three opposed? Motion does not carry. Do I have another motion?
Make a motion, we go with the low bidder, Mega, for 666.
Second.
Madam President?
Discussion. Ms. Edwards?
I'd just like to throw it out there. I know Waste Management is here. I don't believe Mega's here. But if I was in their shoes, after witnessing what we just went through, I wouldn't touch this contract. Either bidder, I wouldn't touch this contract. This is absurd.
We'll have to see what they say. They may need the money, so...
Ms. McGreevy, do you have any comments?
The one is the one of timing, is whether Mega can turn on their service on the 3rd of July.
So, Madam President, so I would say, I guess the first question, if this does pass, the first question would be, and the Director already said that he was going to call Mega tomorrow, would be, could you start it next week? And if they can't, we go to Patriot. But...
Right, so if it turns out you'd need to call a special meeting or something like that...
We'd call a special meeting.
Whatever you decide tonight, there's going to be more information that you're going to need in the future, just to straighten things out, so...
May I ask one question about Joe's motion? Has Counsel reviewed Mega's contract?
Well, I believe...
You're going to have to speak up. We can't hear what you're saying.
I believe it was in the packet to the last meeting.
I haven't written a contract for Mega, because the recommendation of the Counsel was for Waste Management at the time. So I will have to write a contract for Mega.
So the motion could...
Be contingent, it would be contingent upon...
Could be contingent on a solicitor approval of a contract?
Yes. Are you amending your motion that way?
Yes.
Can you repeat the motion, Madam Clerk?
Her motion was to go with the low bidder, Mega, 666,000, contingent on the solicitor review of the contract.
Everybody aware of that? Okay, so everybody knows what they're voting on? Very good. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 431, motion carries. 421, sorry.
Well, thank you, Denise. I need your permission. Thank you.
Madam President, I need two minutes myself.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break. Financial Business, F1, Town Administrator, Ratification of Amendment to Contract for Executive Administrative Assistant, Mary Lou Sullivan, for 2% salary increase effective July 23rd, 2017, for year three of the contract. Hourly rate is amended from $23.37 to $23.84. Town Administrator.
Yes. Sorry for my delay. As you can see in the paperwork that went with that, Mary Lou, my administrative assistant, is an extremely efficient, helpful, and her job description goes well beyond what I could have hoped for coming into this job. So I highly endorse giving her the 2% raise. But quite frankly, I will try, over the course of the year, based on how funding is, to potentially find a way to give her another percent or two. But that's obviously coming to getting permission from the Counsel. But I can't speak more highly of her contributions to the town.
Send to the Bahamas. Send to the Bahamas.
Any questions from the Counsel?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
That we go along with the recommendation of the Town Administrator.
To ratify the amendment to the contract for the executive administrative assistant, Mary Lou Sullivan, for 2% salary increase effective July 23rd, 2017. Mary Lou Sullivan, for a 2% salary increase effective July 23rd, 2017. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
F2, Chief Floyd, request approval of transfer for 5,000 to account 3310-7640, apparatus maintenance, from account 3310-6443, equipment service contracts for 1,000, and from account 3310-7840, station maintenance for 2,000, and from account 3310-6648, minor equipment replacements for 2,000. Chief Floyd?
Good evening. We've been hit with some unexpected repairs on some of the apparatus, my car in particular, and some of the apparatus. We had transferred earlier, we thought we had enough to cover it, but looking forward, we believe we're gonna need this much more to get us through to the end of the week.
Any questions from the Counsel? Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
Make a motion to approve the transfers as requested by the Chief.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Town Administrator, request approval of transfers from various accounts totaling twenty, sorry, totaling $39,171 to cover shortfall in litigation, labor council, and legal zoning issues as attached. Town Administrator?
Yes, Madam President, that's, that is the reason, it's the end of the year cleanup, and we've had significant legal bills, more than 40,000, but that's what this cleanup is for.
Any questions from the Counsel?
I have a question.
Ms. Ryan?
Actually, it may have been, I just wanted to see if that financial town referendum, was that okay?
Yes, that's okay, that's a balance left in there. But, but they're all up to police, so that, and there is one account that the Chief just, I think, approved that's on here that we'll have to remove, so if you could just make the motion up to those amounts.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfers up to the specified amounts as outlined by the Administrator.
Second.
Of 39,000, up to $39,171.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Town Administrator, request approval to transfer year-end balances to cover shortfalls in various accounts.
Yes, apparently, or obviously, I have the authority to move 25,000, but there could be the, 2500, rather, there could be the necessity where I don't want to be stacking these, or appear to be stacking these, if there is, for instance, a $5,000 that we can do in two chunks or something. So, this would just allow, at the next four days, the ability to move funding from those where, that have surpluses, to those that need, have shortfalls at the end of the year.
Any questions from the Counsel?
Madam President, I have a question.
Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Solicitor, is that acceptable?
If you have the authorization, yes.
And...
Can we put a caveat in that, that it be documented at the next Council meeting, and presented to the Town Council?
Absolutely.
Ms. Edwards?
Sure. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Administrator to transfer year-end balances to cover shortfalls in various accounts, provided that he report back to, report back on his activity to the Town Council at the next Town Council meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion?
I, I'm, I'm just looking, thinking that Denise would like to say...
I just wanted to remind you that typically, we, after year-end closes, and as we get the books closer to closing, we usually will do some cleanup transfers, and sometimes it causes confusion, because we're into the next fiscal year. So, if we do do those, and they're usually minor, but it's all in fiscal 17. It's not moving any money from one year to the other. So, I just wanted to kinda make a mention of that.
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed?
No, I'm in favor.
Uh, unanimous. G, Business, G1, Chief Blakey, request authorization to purchase leftover 2016 police cruiser from a listed MPA vendor for $23,800 to replace damaged vehicles, fund from insurance payment of $17,482, and $8,200 from fiscal year 1718 auto repair account. Chief?
I, as in the last couple of years, we've been fortunate enough to have monies generated through details, we were able to replenish our car account. With the casino coming and starting the details recently, I feel we'll have another year. Some of the Councils on previously can recall that I've actually bought a cruiser from this fund at the end of a fiscal year to avoid buying a car. So, I feel confident that I'll be able to do this, and not adversely affect the count, in the upcoming year.
Any questions from the Counsel?
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Chief Blakey to purchase a leftover 2016 police cruiser from listed MPA vendor for $23,800, using the funds as detailed in the request.
Second.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
G2, DPW Director Anderson, request approval of six-month extension of contract with Par Corporation for landfill engineering services. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. All right, so my request, currently we have a contract with Par Engineering, who does our landfill environmental monitoring, and landfill services for what we need, for permitting, licensing, whatever. Their contract expires currently on the end of this month, 6/30. We're at a point now where I'm trying, I need to get some closure documents into the state, another, another document in by September for our license to continue for another three years. And, and it doesn't make any interest, I don't believe it's in the best interest of the town, to try and hire a new company to come in and try and rebid this service. What I would like to do is extend Par's contract for six months, get the necessary documents together, which the majority of the money is coming out of the closure fund, and then put a bid on the street in December, or sorry, for January 1st, start, that will continue the environmental monitoring, and will continue the, the, what I wanna call the, the oversight for the cap. So, those services will be construction oversight services to certify the cap, and then do the environmental monitoring. That will be, that will be in the next contract going forward. This will allow me to use the, use the company that, very familiar, has history with landfill, doesn't make sense to change, change horses, and move forward. What I'm looking to do is, is obviously for the six months, to continue the environmental monitoring program for $22,900, install a Bedrock groundwater monitoring well that's required by our license for the closure, future, for the closure, to do the future monitoring. To do the stormwater management and cap design, and the RMD and permitting, that's $39,600, of which would come out of the closure fund. And then the preparation of the cap construction documents. So, what I'll have is, I'll actually have a big bid set of documents, and a binder, and a book with the specs, that I can put on the street to have a contract to bid this job over, for multiple years, to finally close and cap the landfill. So, that's what I'm asking Par to do in the next six months, which is very feasible, very doable. And then the last thing is to renew the application. They've already done it once, so this is just a rehash of what we done, to put it together, so we can get another three years. That license renewal has to be in by September. So, for them to consider it, because our current license expires on December 13th of this year. So, I'd like permission, obviously, to, what I'm asking for is to extend this contract for six months, so I can get this work done, and then move forward from there.
And you've reviewed this with Par Corporation?
Yes, I have. So, they've, they've indicated they want us to renew. We went back and forth on these prices, and these prices are what I've, I've come out with, yes.
And Bill, these two, the, the 7139 accounts are both funded for these items, or have enough funding in them to cover?
Yes. Currently, we have money in, in the landfill account going forward for the 229.
Yeah.
And then 10,500 is also in that, that number. So, that's in the current budget. The rest of it are all closure related items, that will be coming out of the closure fund.
Thank you.
When you say the current budget fiscal year...
Fiscal, starting July 1st, yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure...
Yes, I checked that, yes. There is money there for that.
Okay. Any questions from the Counsel?
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Anderson, is, we look at the item, stormwater management, is that them coming out flagging wetlands?
That is part of it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that stormwater management includes flagging the wetlands, designing up the stormwater, which in essence, they're designing a cap.
Yep.
Getting the permit set of documents together, getting it into D E M, getting it permitted, and then from that, turning a set, that document into a construction set that that contract can actually give us prices on.
Okay.
So, then we'll take those prices and actually compare it to the closure cost, to make sure how bad we really are. All of which will come back to you for approval to go out and obviously do everything we need to do.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve DPW Director Anderson's request for a six-month extension with Par Corporation for landfill engineering services as detailed by the Director.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Are all those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Floyd, request approval of purchase of 2017 Chevy Tahoe from Colonial South Chevrolet of North Dot McMinnis for $37,766, using $26,000 from the approved, approved at the FTR, and $11,766 from Med's account 202-0000-1990.
I understand that there's gonna be some questions on those, so let me see if I can answer these right up front. We would approve 26,000 for, from the FTR. We came in early back in March to say we needed a car, we were looking for it. We were trying to get a 2016 at that time, or even a 2017 if possible. Those cars are no longer available, we're gonna have difficulty getting one, but we're gonna try. So, we had a move to try to get funds from another account. I had, have applied for certain grants, one grant that I thought I was gonna get, or I'd been given the approval from, from Rhode Island EMA, to be able to use for a vehicle under a past grant control agent from Rhode Island EMA. He's no longer there. He left. We had approval that we could use that for that. The new head of that agency for the grants in EMA said, no, we can't switch that grant to that. So, as the EMA Director, which the Fire Chief is, the Med's grant comes under it. And we call it a grant, but it actually isn't. It was associated back in 2007, when we did Med Deliverables, the medical emergency delivery system for the town. Those monies were put into an account, they've been in there since approximately 2007, and are used to support the functions of EMA. As the EMA Director, we have used some of these funds to build our Emergency Operations Center. In this case, I'm looking as the Emergency Management Director, to be able to use those to support the function of the Fire Chief, which this vehicle would also be used as part of emergency management. It's an applicable use of those funds for that.
Any questions from the Counsel?
Well, so we're gonna be...
Ms. Perry?
Yes, we're gonna be using a grant that was for medical...
It's not actually a grant. It's a deliverable for functions that we provided for the community. We reimbursed, now, I wouldn't say reimbursed, we were, we were paid for the deliverables that we did. At the time, there was no funds set aside to support EMA within the community. These funds went into an account that was set up by the Counsel at that time, to be used to support EMA. It's been known as the Med's Grant Account, because that's where those money came from. But, it's been there since about 2007.
I, I just, I just worry about approving something that, you know, was, 'cause when we talked to you back in April, you said grant money could not be used for anything other than what it was designated for.
I said the grant money could not be used for some of the functions that the Administrator at the time was trying to use those for. It was used to support EMA. That was the original intent of why those funds were put there. As EMA Director, I believe it's an applicable use to it. This is money that we already have.
So, so Chief, just to clarify on that, 'cause I'm actually the one that asked the question back in March, when we were going through the budget, and I looked at these two accounts that you have in the back of the book. One of this is this Med's Grant thing, and I asked if any of those funds...
You're absolutely right, I know.
...could be applied to any of the things in the current budget to help offset them. And you explained to me that they couldn't. So, and at the time, we'd been talking about your car. So, I have to admit, I'm a little bit confused that we asked about this back in March, during budget season, and the answer was no. And here we are now in June, and all of a sudden, we can swing money out of these funds to go for a vehicle. You lost me there, Chief.
You're absolutely right in what I told you back in March. And those, what was brought to me by the Administrator at those times, is he wanted to use every single cent that was in there for another item that was not related to emergency management.
Right, but we were, we were talking about the budget, your, your 2018 budget, and could any of those things, and this car is, or vehicle is part of the, I, I'm just saying, Chief, it, it's a little confusing, because we did talk about this topic, and whether or not we could apply some of those grant funds towards your 2018 budget items, and it didn't seem possible then. And it seems possible now, so, you know, I'm a little simple sometimes. I get confused by things like that.
Madam President, so just to, just to clarify, I was talking with Nancy before to get, see if we find information on this, but this was before the Council in March, and was there a motion to not approve, was there a motion to not approve the request at that time? Because if that was the case, then I think this would have to be advertised as a request for reconsideration of that original...
I, I don't remember this ever coming up, as far as an agenda item.
There was, there was a request for a vehicle, and then that was the, the night that, that was the night that Bill Anderson, I remember this graciously, said, well, I have an extra car, and then Chief, the Chief said, do you remember that night? And then the Chief said, I, Chief Blakey said, I have something, like, all of a sudden, I do remember, now that you say that, I do remember that the vehicle, the purchase of this vehicle was in front of us.
And it wasn't approved, we, we wanted the number to remain at 26,000.
Right.
That's what the discussion was.
And I think in the budget, it was 26, right?
Right.
And I, yeah.
I think they cut it to 24, didn't they, the Budget Committee?
You know, I thought they cut it to 28 to 24.
I think the budget request was 28, and it was cut to 26.
Chief, is this not a grant, or it is a grant, that you're going after? This money, is it a grant or not a grant?
No, this is not a grant.
So, so let, let me just get this, back in March, the Chief Lloyd requested purchasing a vehicle. We did not approve it at that point, because it was not in the fiscal 1617 budget. This request is to purchase a vehicle using fiscal year 1718 budget dollars of the 26,000.
Right.
So, it's a different request than March.
So, I just wanted to get clarification on that point, just because I was discussing with Nancy, and I was looking through the minutes, to try to get an idea of what was discussed at that previous meeting.
Right, and that, that meeting, we said there was no budget for it, so we did not approve it, and they went to a cost walk with the Chief of Police and...
The Administrator at that time had put together particular account items that he felt that he could give up to get the car. You are correct. It was not, it's not the same request. It was, he was using different money from different, various accounts, for overages in accounts. That was the original request at that time.
Right. And as my recollection, this account for Med's account never came up in that discussion. I don't ever remember that coming up.
Not in this discussion, but Mrs. Hilton is correct, that during the budget process, we did discuss the Med's account.
Chief, were you just trying to...
And that was the answer I gave her, yes.
Were you just trying to protect your money, then, from the old Administrator? Is that what you were doing, when you told him you can't touch that money?
You're absolutely right.
I figured that's it. So, now you need it, and it's gonna be for a good purpose? You did a good job. You protected your money for your department.
Any other comments?
I handed out, I handed out some paperwork to all the Council members on vehicles that I had looked for, that we didn't necessarily have to go to a brand-new vehicle, 2016s, with low mileage, just at one dealership, was Tasker Ford. I'm sure that, there probably are other ones we can look at to try to save some money, if possible, and go with the $26,000. And I can give a copy of it to the Chief to look over it, but I mean, and, and I'm not gonna say, you know, that, I'm not gonna say buy a vehicle, a 2016, if it's got 30,000 miles or 40,000 miles on it, when you could buy a 17 for another $5,000 more. But, there are some decent, used, or leftover vehicles with low mileage, that you can buy the extended warranty, and still get away with about $28,000 on a vehicle.
Madam President?
Mr. Perry, you had said to me earlier, that you asked to, can I get through to July?
Right.
I did that. You've also said in public, that I haven't fought hard enough, that I need to fight harder. But, now you're giving me a used vehicle, and I have no, no idea where it's at. Why, why do we have to take a used vehicle? I, I'm, I'm lost at this. I'm lost at this. Is my department any less viable than any other department? It's an emergency vehicle that responds.
Right. Something with low mileage, you could get 10 years, five years out of it. You know, your vehicle's got 200 and something thousand miles, and you get how many years out of it? You know, just my opinion.
Mr. Perry, you're supposed to be directing comments to me and not, not, not to the Chief.
Okay. But, yeah.
Understood.
Any comments from the town administrator?
Well, I suppose a possible way forward here is to, is to continue this and let us look at other options, what, you know, if the, if it's an appropriate use of the Med's funds, to clarify that, if there is a less expensive vehicle that we could use or research and purchase. So, I'm perfectly willing, if you want me to, to ask for a continuance of this, we can do that.
May I ask one other thing?
Ms. Hilton?
One of the things about the Chief's car, and I learned this a little bit during the budget process, is that the Chief's car has certain equipment on it that other vehicles don't have, which I appreciate the town needs. And particularly, it's the only vehicle that has the ability to boost the communication so that when you're in certain parts of southern Tiverton, or in places where you don't have commu, without that vehicle, you could have people at an incident site, and they have no way to communicate back with the station. So, that was a pretty alarming thing that I learned during the budget process. However, and I know, Chief, you put in a lot of long hours, but your vehicle's only here about a third of the time. So, the other question in all of this, if we're going to look at this, is whether or not, while the Chief definitely needs a vehicle, some of the equipment on the Chief's vehicle, should that be in something that's here all the time? So, whoever is the incident commander, because I know the Chief comes over here, but if there's a fire at 3:00 in the morning, hopefully you're at home, I mean, asleep when you get called, you're not here, so that the things that are unique to that vehicle, that whoever's, you know, until you get here, the incident commander has access to them, is that, you know, can we investigate exactly what things need to be on whose vehicle and where these vehicles are so that, you know, we know that the firefighters are safe all the time? We don't have a situation where they're, they're at a fire someplace, and they don't have the vehicle that boosts the communication, and, you know, they can't talk to the station.
And again, you're absolutely right, and I do agree with you. The supervisor's vehicle now is, got a bad engine knock. That one, we don't think is going to make it. We had $14,000 that went in this year's budget to try to get that, a used car or something in the meantime, to carry that one through. When I received the used vehicle that I'm driving now, I was told by the administrator that money had to go over to the department that was giving me that car. So, it's already cost me $14,000. So, now I don't have a replacement car to go in for that supervisor's car.
So, it sounds like we need to...
Get to the bottom of this.
We need to continue this to the next meeting. Do I have a motion? Mr. Edwards?
I just want to comment. I heard Councilor Perry's alarm go off, and I'd actually like to make a motion to continue the remainder of our calendar until the next council meeting and move directly to executive session.
Second.
I've seen Chairman Cox of the Harbor Commission sitting here all night long patiently. I can't imagine sending him home at this point.
On second.
Actually, the...
In that case, I'll withdraw my motion.
Actually, the governance policy of the town council is a three-and-a-half-hour meeting, so it would go until 10:30, not 10:00.
I'll wait till 10:30.
Very good. So, do I have a motion to continue this item to the next meeting?
So moved.
And in the meantime, are we going to direct the town administrator to also look into the possibility of, you know, a quality, low-mileage used car, and whether or not what equipment needs to be on whose cars to make sure the firefighters are always safe?
I consider that part of the discussion that we have to look at.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Oh, is me in time? I need a motion, but me as the second.
Okay, so we have a motion to, and a second to continue this item to the next meeting. All those in favor? Unanimous. Town Administrator Bruce Cox, Chair of the Harbor Commission, request to solicit bids for engineering services for mooring basin analysis.
Mooring basin study, thank you. Madam President, members of the council, and congratulations to all of you who have never been before this council before. I've been before a number of the other councils. I am the chairman of the Harbor Commission, which is one of your many little commissions that advises you and does things for the town. In our last year's budget, we had a $5,000 item to be able to solicit bids for a mooring field study. The objective of the mooring field study, for those of you who don't know what the Harbor Commission and mooring fields are all about, is that this is actually an element of the town that makes some money for the town. We, our overall budget is about $25,000. We bring in about $60,000, so it's a profit center. Our objective is twofold, A, to increase the profit center, and B, to make the mooring field more efficient, more profitable for the town, and service more of the town citizens. We did not get out any bids out. I want the permission to go out for bids in this coming year using the 2016-'17 budget money that we have. Things that have interfered with this process have been our study of what's going on with the tidal flow in the basin as caused by the removal of the Stone Bridge trestle abutments and such, as well as focusing quite heavily on the Stone Bridge, I said, Sycodan River trestle abutments, and focusing on the Stone Bridge replacement process. Interestingly, you've seen the, that can be called the big blue boat going up and down the river, making everybody curious, is what's going on? It's my understanding, based upon the articles I've read, that they are doing a superb study of the bottom of the Sycodan River for purposes of laying cable up through the Sycodan River and obviously through the basin. If we were to go out and do an engineering exercise now, and then that cable went right through the middle of it, that would be a waste of everyone's time, money, and energy. Furthermore, I would like to think that they might share that data with us and with any engineer that might be willing to look at this process. So, what I'm asking this council is to approve us to be utilizing next year, actually, we would actually come back to you to, for specific permission to go out for, you know, submit bids and award bids, to do an engineering study of our side of the Sycodan River basin, and recognizing we only own the eastern side. We have the right to manage the eastern side when we own it. The, it is actually owned by the state and the federal government. So, that is the gist of our request. We have $5,000 in this year's budget that we want to essentially execute for next year.
Okay, so I have an issue with this because we should have gone out for bid already and to encumber those funds.
Yeah, Madam President, if I may, yeah, what I've noticed when we were doing cleanups on the budget, there was this $5,000 in the last week that hadn't been touched, and it's not in the budget for the new year. So, we, if we don't use it, it will go into the unrestricted fund or the general fund, I believe. And, and as, as Mr. Cox has just said, that is a revenue generating capable, or potential down there, and I'd really like to find a way to either use these funds, if possible, and I know that it's against procedure and against past practice, or we try to find funds in the new year, but these funds are here now. So, that's, it's definitely an unusual consideration.
Ms. Swartz?
So, I think at this point, you're kind of at the preliminary stage of soliciting the bids. The question of can you encumber them in time, that's a tough situation to be in, but right now, it's not the question of where the money comes from, it's a question of who's going to bid, and then you can look at the person that had been on the contract to deal with that time. But there is the F T R. resolution that any unencumbered funds do transfer into the unrestricted fund of general year and fiscal year, so just take that consideration. But at this point, it's just a question of soliciting bids, so.
I don't believe we can go out to solicit bids at this point and get a response by Friday in order to encumber the, the funds.
Unfortunately, Madam President, I believe you're right.
May I ask a question?
Ms. Hilton?
Thank you. And maybe just because, like, it's all getting fuzzy, but was this not in the budget?
It was requested in the new fiscal year, but it was not funded.
Was there, but was there some, I don't...
This $5,000 was not in our, not a repeated request in this, for the '17-'18 budget.
But there's some, there was, I don't, there was something in there that if it was approved... No, that's revenue. I don't know why, but it was in a weird place in the budget. It wasn't like under the Harbor Commission. It was like in some, I don't, maybe I'm losing...
Madam Treasurer, can you offer some clarity?
There was some strange thing, in a strange place in the budget for the Harbor Commission, for something, and whether...
But in any event, if the bids were solicited, and again, they might, most likely wouldn't be solicited in time to encumber for this fiscal year, but it would always be contingent upon us looking at the F T R.
One person at a time, please, folks. Mr. Swartz?
If there is this question of, you know, are the funds included in the next fiscal year's budget, or is there a place we can get the funds from, then we could solicit the bids, obviously contingent on being able to get the funds, and if it's in there, then you can get the funds and pay someone if you think they're qualified, or if you can't get the funds, and you determine there's no way to get the funds, you could just pass out, pass all the, pass out all the bids.
So, I think the, what you're basically saying is the option is we could approve going out to for bid and look for the money later.
Right, because then you still have...
Or continue this to the next meeting.
Well, there's another option that our very experienced interim town manager and town clerk suggested is that we approve a transfer from something that has money, that doesn't have money next year, and we use this money on something that is in the shortfall this year.
Litigation.
For instance, litigation.
I, I, we found you. You are getting your no-wake buoys this year, right?
Pardon?
Your no-wake buoys?
Our no-wake buoys, I apologize. I mean, the request for the no-wake buoys?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that was approved or not.
It was.
Okay.
So, for $5,000?
Right.
Are you getting them?
Yeah, they'll be, that's actually under the Harbor Masters budget, as opposed to the Commission's budget, where we are separate entities.
I just knew that there was something strange in there.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Since it sounds like our clerk has come up with a viable solution, I'd like to make a motion.
Doesn't mean the legislature goes...
Well, I'd like to make a motion to authorize, you know, Bruce Cox, Chair of the Harbor Commission, to solicit bids for engineering services for the mooring basin analysis.
And if you like, at the next meeting, we can give you an illegal opinion on your proposal for coming up.
We've got, we've got money in the council contingency too, so.
Well, I, you know, I hate to go out for bid without having verification that there's money in the budget to accommodate this, because then it's, then we're scrambling around for money. So, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
So, discussion?
Discussion, Mrs. Ryan?
So, were you thinking that we just do a continuance? Is that what you, is that what you were thinking? Or not?
Well, I think they have to resolve whatever issue they have. I'm looking at a suggestion.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
If, just if I hear you correctly, Mr. Solicitor, we can authorize him to go out for bid, that's fine. And then we just, when the bids come in, we find the money, or we don't find the money, and we just don't award a contract. So, I think we're, we're correct, we're covered regardless. So, it's the authorizing, Mr. Cox, to go out to bid doesn't necessarily bind the town to spend the $5,000. He's supposed to come to us for approval to award the bid.
And indeed, and indeed, the proposals may come back in excess of $5,000. It's, there are some very strong variables here. We're going to lose a few moorings possibly with the rebuild of the Stone Bridge abutment. It's still frustrating in that sense. Had it budgeted, but not, not wanting to spend it because, gee, we had it. It wasn't how we were going to approach it.
Well, it's not, it sounds like you generate revenue for the town, and I'm all for that, so.
And service the people, you know, it's...
You've got my support.
Instant balance.
Well, thank you.
All right.
So, what was the, what was the motion?
So, the motion was to authorize the Harbor Commission to solicit bids for engineering services for a mooring basin analysis, correct?
Correct.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor? Approved.
Thank you.
And the town administrator can figure out the finances once the bids come in.
Thank you.
Good luck. G5 Denise Charet, Town Treasurer, permission to advertise for payroll slash accounts payable clerk?
I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but the Assistant Treasurer has submitted her retirement papers. She's been with the town for 37 years. I think she is the longest employed AFSME employee that the town currently has right now. So, she will be leaving mid-July. Her job has been posted and filled by the other full-time position in my office, Deb Parent, so that job is open. That job is being posted, it should have gone up today, for five days, and the union president just suggested that I request permission to advertise, just to make sure that if it doesn't get filled, that we can get the ad in the paper and get the ball rolling and not be behind the eight ball when she actually leaves.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
Is that Susan Conboy?
Yes.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Town Treasurer to advertise for the payroll slash accounts payable clerk position.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Very good. Bits and request for proposal, H1, Chief Lloyd, request permission to waive the bid process and authorize A J. drywall and plastering, perform repairs to the ceiling of Station 3, Crandall Road, from water damage to roof.
Madam President, since we put this on the agenda, we got an opinion from our solicitor that there really isn't a justification for sole source at this point, so I'd like to ask either for a continuance or to pull this from the agenda, both this one and the other one, the second one.
Okay, so we will, I don't think...
A continuance doesn't work because the money goes away, so I just want to pull them from the agenda.
Okay, so we have H1 and H2 have been pulled from the agenda this evening. Next up, town administrator announcements?
None.